See, I'm already having technical problems. So, anyway, thank you Fran. The first item on our agenda is a invocation and pledge, being that you can, everybody can see who's watching this meeting, that we are personally spaced apart from each other. So I'm going to remove my mask because we're further away. And off we go. So Ms. McCarron, if we could all please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heavenly Father, we take time to thank you this morning that you are a good God and you are a refuge in times of trouble and that you care for those who are in trouble. We thank you, Lord, that in these times of difficulty, that you remain our constant source of strength and security, for you change not and your mercies are new every morning. So Father, though there are troubles and concerns around us and business to be conducted today, we take this moment to say thank you for your daily mercies and to be still and know you are God, as the psalmist reminds us. We ask, Lord, for your peace to descend upon us and upon our land. And Father, we ask for health and healing, divine healing, for every person who has been touched by this virus, that they would recover by your divine intervention. And now, Lord, we move forward in our day mindful of your promise to never leave us or forsake us, so we draw on your wisdom and strength. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you Fran, thanks for that. Okay, we'll move on to the roll call. So Ms. McCarron, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Hickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Fran. Now, the highlight of this show always, the pet showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. Anyone interested in these pets can call 602-506-PETS. Meet Sophie and Claire. This lovable pair, let me make sure I get a picture of them. This lovable pair are one-year-old Chihuahua mixes. They came in together estranged, so we don't know much about their background. But we do know that they love to run and play in the yard and they want to be your best friends. They do not have to be adopted together, but who could resist taking both of these girls home? They're available for adoption at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday at our shelter at 2500 South 27th Avenue. Adoption appointments are required and available at pets.maricopa.gov. So hopefully they'll find a good, a nice home. And I hear that we are having remarkable numbers on adoption, so good on the Animal Care and Control Division for that. Ms. McCarron, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of changes to like districts, but when we get further into the agenda, I will announce those.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring up to next, the presentation number five is a proclamation regarding Child Support Awareness Month. If Ms. McCarron could read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation, Child Support Awareness Month, August 2020. Whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children whose safety and security remains top of mind, and whereas the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, is committed to putting Arizona's children first and serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness. Whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and is better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life, and whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes diligent parents who spend time with their child and make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. And whereas Maricopa County, along with others, advocates for shared parenting responsibilities, realizing the benefits of both parents regardless of marital status, being engaged with their child at every stage of growth. Now therefore, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors hereby joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and proclaims the month of August 2020 in Maricopa County as Child Support Awareness Month.
Okay, thank you Fran. So that is the proclamation. So the board will now consider item number five, which is the proclamation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion or second it with a quick comment, though.
Okay, is that a second from Bill Gates? And so go ahead first, Steve Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, we entertain this proclamation every year and it just really shows the importance of this type of message sending out to the community. We got literally hundreds of thousands of young ones that are in our community throughout the state of Arizona and across this country that are living without both parents. And it's important to continue to send that message, the involvement of both parents. I myself, as you probably are already aware, am a member of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Program. And my little brother, we've been teamed up together for 10 years and he's turning 18 in December, has never seen his father, has never had any contact with his father, his father's never been part of his life, and definitely has not even supported him financially. And it's unfortunate. You see the struggles that this young man has endured over the many years by not having that financial help. But he's just an example of just thousands of kids throughout our valley. It's important for us to continue that message, to continue to remind parents the importance that they may be separated from their spouse or their loved one, but they do have a responsibility. And the responsibility is to their child and for them to continue to be involved, not only financially, but emotionally, they need to be there. So I am pleased to continue to see this resolution come before us.
Great, thank you Steve. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, Mr. Gallardo put it extremely well and, you know, frankly, this has never been more important than it is right now. We have parents who are out of work, we've got children who are missing out on the opportunities, you know, educational opportunities, things like that. And so this is no more important time than now for us to be reemphasizing our support for people paying their child support. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome. I'm sure that we all concur with that. Life is difficult as it is already for children and whatever we can do to bring awareness to that issue where families need to take care of their own. So I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, so we accept the proclamation. And you'll be passing that around a little bit later Fran, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on. We are going to go a little bit out of order because I see a publicly elected official here that is probably very busy and a couple others too in the judge's corps. So I'm going to skip to item number 19. So this is under statutory hearings, the county attorney. 19 is a public hearing regarding a home detention program. I would like to invite Ms. Alistair Adele to come up. I believe Mr. Vick also is with her. Okay, let's see. I've got a note here that presiding JP Keith Russell will be at the meeting in person. Oh, God, I don't hardly recognize you under that mask. So sorry Judge. So if you could, Ms. Adele, if you could take it away. Why are you here gracing us with your presence today?
Well, good morning Chairman and supervisors and those on the phone. Thank you for having us here today and we appreciate you taking us a little bit out of order on the agenda. So the home detention program. If you recall, during the appointment process, I had mentioned a desire to explore that. And then the transition team that was in place when I started in October also researched other jurisdictions and how they handle those cases. And once I reheard the positive feedback from programs from the other cities and a couple of counties, I felt confident saying that let's look at how we can do this in Maricopa County. This is a transition from, or departure from where we were before. However, I think it's one that's time, especially with COVID-19, but I think it's time for our county to come into this because the amount of savings that we will have is astronomical. The important thing to me, though, is that this reduces recidivism. It allows mainly DUI offenders to be back and working and not institutionalized when they're in jail for 10, 12, 14, 20 days, sometimes 30 days, especially with the likelihood that work furlough and work release are not going to be available any longer. It risks them being in the jails, especially with the spread of COVID-19. I can tell you that from stakeholders that we've discussed this program with, for everybody from the Justice of the Peace, two of whom are seated here right behind me, to those running the programs, it has proved successful and even the defense community out there has been very grateful and has frequently asked, why doesn't Maricopa County have one? We're the fourth largest county in the country. And I think that even though we would have a little bit lower numbers in the cities, for instance, we are confident that it would save us around 250,000 to 500,000 a year. The city of Phoenix, when they started their program in 2011 through last year, they reported 2.4 million annually. So let's talk about the anticipated cost savings. It's a challenge for us to actually pinpoint this number, but given the average number of DUI arrests that are made by DPS and MCSo, our main partners in this, we're guessing 250,000 to 500,000. Once the pandemic is lessened, we'll see more and more people out and these numbers will go up. In 2019, there was 209 individuals with misdemeanor DUI cases that would have qualified. In 2018, there was 289. And the average sentence was 10 days in 2018 and 14 in 2019. We have good support for this, as you see from our Justice of the Peace here. Sheriff Penzone supports this, Public Defense Services, the private defense bar, and also Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Jason Frazier, the executive director, I spoke with him directly, he could not be here today, but he is in support of the program. He's seen the benefits of it down in Pima County and in Tucson where he actually is headquartered. Could the home detention program potentially have other forms of cases than there, other than DUIs? The answer is yes. Our JPs can do that now, but what needs approval is for DUIs is the Board of Supervisors' vote if we're going to have DUI offenders in a home detention program. With that, I would, I have any questions and turn it over to Mr. Vick, should he all have any specific questions about how the program would work?
Great, and welcome, Mr. Vick. At this point, I'm going to look around and I'm also, that I can see the faces of my colleagues on the, on the, my little laptop here too, but I'm going to first of all go to our resident legal expert. Yeah, I'm looking at you Bill. You be that guy. Is there any questions you have for Mr. Vick or any concerns or issues you can foresee with this?
You know, Mr. Chair, I don't, I think that, you know, I've had the opportunity to talk both with the county attorney's office and then also with our justices of the peace and get their perspective on this. And this program makes a lot of sense for a variety of reasons to me. And it's not like we're on the bleeding edge here. I mean, this is something that other jurisdictions have utilized in the valley, effectively. Phoenix, coming from Phoenix, I'm aware of the success that they've had in the last decade or so with it. So I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. I will go to Steve Chukri.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our county attorney because I think she's done really a remarkable job at streamlining things within the county attorney's office, taking some unfortunate situations and having to deal with them straight on, which you have done, Alistair, I think in a very acute and professional way. And it needed to happen. And I think this just dovetails into some of the great work she's doing. We talked about smart justice with your predecessor. I know that all of us believe in it. I think Mr. Gates even said something in your speech about it when you were chairman. And so I see how this dovetails into it. My only hiccup, and I am not going to get in the way of this, I think it should pass and I'm not going to, I committed that to the county attorney. I want to applaud Mr. Russell and all the JPs for their work on this. I just have a fundamental issue with repeat offenders as well as extreme DUIs. And I've done my homework and I'm grateful to all of you for giving me that timeframe to do it as I asked that this be continued. But in speaking with police chiefs and speaking with the governor's office and highway safety and others, I was not necessar, I don't want to say reassured, but reassured in my opinion that I think for first-time offenders, we all make mistakes and I totally get it and I completely understand it. But I think if someone is out there repeat offending or someone is getting extreme DUIs, I just believe there should be some jail time. It doesn't have to be all of it, but I just think there has to be some form of jail time on that. So it's for those reasons, I don't support the cause, I do, I just can't support this as drafted.
Thank you. Points are on target, Steve, so thank you for bringing that up. I'm looking at my colleagues through the internet. Would either of you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gallardo, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I just want to let everybody know who's speaking. Supervisor Gallardo, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I quickly want to definitely thank our county attorney, Alistair Adele, for bringing this forward. This, in my opinion, I also, by the way, before I go on to my little stump speech, I also want to thank Justice Russell and I think, I mean, I have Judge Uberman, the West Valley, and I know Judge Michelle Reagan, my dear friend from the legislature, Michelle Reagan, she had reached out to a couple of us to want to talk about this as well. So I want to thank all them first of all, and then the work they have done to really advocate and move this forward. In my eyes, this is, this is like a drop in the bucket. I mean, this is the least we really should be doing. When we talk about criminal justice reform and, you know, I want to remind you, there was thousands of people that took to the streets a month ago and one of their cries was they felt that they were treated unfairly in the criminal justice system and they wanted some reforms and they, they're asking the legislature and the governor and the attorney general for some reforms when it comes to criminal justice. And this is something, and granted, there's not much we can do in terms of criminal justice reform unless we go to the legislature, but there are things that we do have control of and this is one of them. And I really feel that this is a step in the right direction. We want to help people not reoffend, we want to help people get on the right track, we want to help people be, you know, citizens of our society and for those that make mistakes, we want to help them get back on the right track. And I think that this is one of those steps. So to me, I am very supportive, I've been very supportive since day one, since I got on this board. I've always scratched my head on why Maricopa County never went in this direction. I understand the politics, that's fine. But I think this is definitely the right direction and this is something that the JPs have been asking for. I know even criminal justice advocates, and for the first time you have, you know, folks from both sides, the Republicans and Democrats, coming together, talking about how we can do criminal justice more smartly, how can we reduce the cost of our criminal justice system? And so it's programs like this and giving the tools to the JPs and the judges to be able to advocate, you know, other municipalities are doing this, this isn't, you know, other states are doing it. And, you know, and then you add on the time, on top of that, not only trying to reduce recidivism, you know, you're reducing the cost of criminal justice as well. So I'm very supportive, I do want to thank once again Alistair for her work and her office, for reaching out to my office to really get this thing moving forward. So very supportive and to greater things coming around when it comes to smart justice.
Great, thank you Steve. Jack, I'm looking at you. Did you have any further comments or any questions for County Attorney Adele? Well, I don't see Jack looking like he wants to flag something. If he does, I'll just go into something really quickly that I wanted to ask him. What I'd like to do is if I could ask Judge Russell, he's here in attendance, I'd like him to come up because I have a specific question I'd like to ask the judge because I know they worked hard and Judge, if you could introduce one of your colleagues that's very special to me in my district.
I would be pleased to-
And you can take your mask off so I can finally recognize-
Well, you tell me if I need to. Are you hearing me well enough?
It's up to you. If that's, that's fine, that's fine.
In the courtroom, we only are allowed to remove our mask to identify or if the record's not clear.
Okay.
So it's a habit.
That's good.
I had a friend say, you know, if you try to slice and dice too many times, you're going to make a mistake and the wrong one and get caught. I just tried to do-
Well, Judge, I will have to say on personal identification, I didn't recognize you with that mask and that longer hair that you're sporting, so I didn't know. The barber shops are open, so.
I knew I was going to get a comment on. If I can, I've got Judge Don Watts with me. Don is our associate presiding judge, he's the judge up in Manistee. He has been the one with the justice courts over the last number of months who've taken the lead on this. And I want to call out Don and thank him publicly for the leadership he's shown. I've got a list of other people I need to thank, but I wanted to start off with that introduction, thank you.
Okay.
I do want to say thank you to a number of people, the sheriff's office, the public defender's office, and obviously the county attorney's office for getting us to this point today. There's been a lot of people who've done a lot of work and we ought to focus, and I think there was a comment earlier about yesterday, I'm not worried about yesterday, I am worried about tomorrow. And basically what this does is this allows me as a judge, when I am sentencing somebody on a misdemeanor DUI, and I think it's important to recognize, we're talking about misdemeanor DUIs, we have three different categories, we only have first and second offenders and on the third offense, they actually end up in Superior Court, so I'm not as familiar with that world. But this allows me to treat them if they get charged in a county island or on the freeway the same as somebody would be charged out in front of this building. Because most of our municipalities have this, have had it for a number of years, they've done it successfully. This allows me not to answer the question, Judge, why am I not eligible if I was on the other side of the street? And that's a hard question to answer. So I appreciate the opportunity to have this in front of you, I appreciate the opportunity of so many people to get us to that point. If I can, there's one thing I think, and I'm happy to answer questions, I'm happy to give you, I brought a book, I'm happy to talk forever, you guys know me, but there is a requirement that people do to be eligible for home detention, that they do serve some time in jail. The requirement is at least one day or if it is, and it's depending upon the charge, the majority of our defendants only serve one day in jail because of the way the charges come to our door, but they have to serve 20% of their time that they would normally be sentenced or, and at least one day. So if it's somebody who's only going to jail for one day, guess what, they're not even eligible. That's the majority of our cases. As Alistair had indicated, this is not impacting all of the DUIs that come our way, this is impacting some of them. But there are hoops, there are statutory requirements, there are procedural requirements, and there is a vetting process. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer questions, I'm happy to give you a little spiel, whatever you would prefer.
Well, I just, I've got my eye on Jack too, if he wanted to say something, but I, first of all, want to congratulate your office for working hard on this. You have hit the ground running. You told us you were going to be doing these types of things and unanimously this board hired you because of your vision statement. So it should be expected that you are going to be looking harder into these types of programs and programs that maybe other communities offer that we did not know. I appreciate the judges working hard and giving their concerns and framing this program. Candace, thank you for working hard because we were at a continuance because I wanted to make sure my board got as much information as possible and that we were talking to the community and you proved that. So thank you Candace Koppel for doing that as well. But I do, I do have a couple things. You know, my family has been involved in the, this area for quite a while when it comes to inmates in the Department of Corrections system and doing everything we can to knock that recidivism level down with, with basically low-risk inmates. So our family has paid the cost, but sometimes pay the price because sometimes they go, some people go right back out in the community and create another problem for the county resident or the county taxpayer by going back into prison and we've, and all of us are footing that bill. So I hear you, Steve. I had some of those same concerns, so, but I'm making assumptions and I want you to make an assumption when I'm looking at this. I'm looking at this as a pilot program. It might not say it to you guys, but from my board and while I'm here as supervisor, I'm going to be asking questions along this. Is this a fruitful program that, that has helped the community, not just a certain part? So I guess my question is, listening to Steve and Bill has an experience in Phoenix where they've already put this program in place, and I want to ask you specifically, and I'm kind of shocked that Steve Gallardo didn't ask this question, will this program be fair and equitable? I know that we all get to see the statue of the Lady Justice and because she's got a blindfold on, because she dispenses justice blindly, right? And I don't want you to go too deep into that, but I want to know out of your, you guys worked hard on this across the entire county. I know you brought in the JPs, I know you've talked with staff, I know you talked with Sheriff Penzone. I just want the assurances that this program will be fair and equitable to everyone in our community. Yeah?
Okay, I want to make sure, I'm supposed to be talking. If I can, let me start off by quoting the end of the statute that authorizes this and it says the Board of Supervisors may terminate the program in the same manner that they approve it. So you do have control if you feel like it's not moving forward in an appropriate fashion. I just want to point that out. Justice, and when you're talking about a blindfold, I wanted to move my mask up over my glasses, but they'd never unfog, so. Justice is a challenge. Every case is unique. One of the things when I talked about procedural protections, if you will, there are statutory protections, there has to be a risk assessment done that's required in the statute before this is authorized. But the process, we have a very good working relationship, but it's a working relationship with Adele's people in our courts. The vast majority of the pleas or the cases that come before us are settled through a plea agreement. A plea agreement spells out the particulars of what the sentence is going to be. A judge does not have the right, if the plea agreement says, we don't want home detention and the judge wants it, the judge can't scratch that line and accept everything else. It's an all-or-nothing proposition. Same thing if it says you can't have home or you can, and the judge says, I don't want to. We are required to have that working relationship and honor the contract that's made between defendants and the prosecutor. If it goes to a trial, the judge is going to have a chance to hear all of the particulars. And again, every case is unique. It's fascinating- It's fascinating to me how I go into cases thinking I understand what I'm going to hear. And by the time I've listened to all the evidence, my mind has changed. The appropriate sentence for each setting needs to be unique. We're all aware the legislature for DUIs has mandated a regiment that has to be in place. I'm not a policymaker. I want to respect the policymakers' decisions to do that. This is one of the very few areas where a judge has relatively little discretion. This would give them discretion with home detention so that they can recognize the unique nature of each one of those cases. I believe our judges will. I think that's to the heart of your question. But if you don't feel like after a while it's been working that way, you have the ability to remove it.
Yeah, so I'll stop you there. And I just want everyone to know, and Steve also, that we do have that. If it doesn't, if it's not working out, we do have the ability to call in and say, hey, we need some numbers and something's not panning out. I don't want to give fodder to any one side of that scale that we're doing something wrong and it starts affecting other things. Because that's when the county and the county treasury is affected in that regard. So my next question is to Alistair Adele. Alistair, I think you talked about it, but the term risk assessment came up. We're in the starting blocks with this. Does the risk outweigh, equal, or accrue less when it comes to reward to the county resident and the county taxpayer?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman. To the judge's point also, when we talk about being fair and equitable, to your first question to him, there is a level of discretion with prosecutors. If we see somebody really shouldn't be in home detention and that is not appropriate, we don't have to offer it. So when our judges get that discretion is when the defendant pleads to the court to the charges or goes to trial and is found convicted. So there is some built-in safeguards in the system in that regard. As far as risk, I'm not identifying much risk at all within this, especially when we've had the benefit of looking at other jurisdictions and how they've done it. And if the board would feel more comfortable calling a pilot program, it still would need to be passed because we need your approval for DUIs. I can tell you that Scottsdale City did this. They did it as a pilot program for two years. And then they reported back to their city council on what their findings were. And that's certainly something that we can do as well. And that might abate some of the risks, but we will always, if there's a problem, come to you in the interim.
Okay. I just wanted you guys to know where I was at in my mind with a program like this. Because we expect great things, but sometimes we see others. And I want you to know, our board is going to constantly be looking at this. We hope it's a fabulous success, as other communities have pointed out. And we hope that you guys run that and the judges run that in the same fashion. So before I ask for a motion, I didn't. Jack, I didn't know if you needed to say anything or if you wanted, because all of us have said something. Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Okay, that, I think we're good. I don't see any other further questions. The board will now consider item number 19.
Mr. Chair, after hearing from the county attorney, from the judge, from our colleagues, I feel that there really is a necessity for us to move forward with the pilot program for home detention. So because of that, I make a motion that we move forward with this home detention program.
Thank you, Bill. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a nay?
No.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, we are going to go a little bit still out because I happen to have you. Yes, Judge?
Mr. Chairman, could I take a point of personal privilege for 30 seconds?
Sure.
Would you allow somebody who's been around for 15 years to do that?
Yeah, sure. I will allow it.
Thank you. I just want to, because I'm here and I'm in front of you, I want to express my appreciation. This is not necessarily the judge talking, but it is somebody who's been elected official in Maricopa County for the last 15 years. I've seen some tough times at the county. I want to express my appreciation for the job that you're doing, the care you're taking on my behalf, my family's behalf, all the people who work in the courts and the people we see. Thank you. Supervisor Chukri, he's my supervisor. I know him probably as well as anybody, but I think every single member of this board carries the same commitment to all of the citizens. I just feel an obligation, especially at this time, to say thank you.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate that. It's nice to hear.
Mr. Chairman, just in abundance of caution for the county attorney, this is a hearing, and did Fran need to ask if anyone was to speak just so we don't have this come back later and say we didn't do it correctly?
You know, that is good. It's, thank you for pointing that out, Steve, because it's hard. I usually have Fran that I can see to my left, but due to personal spacing, I, thanks for asking. It is a hearing.
I'm sure we're fine, but I wouldn't want someone to suggest that we didn't do this by proper protocol.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chukri. Mr. Chairman, we did have some people send in comments. No one has asked to speak. All of the people who commented were in favor of the program and thankful that the board was considering this.
Okay, great. So, and Fran bringing that up. I mean, are you in constant contact with Deb? Is she watching the internet and everything else? Okay, so letting everybody know that we've, our eyes are still on that. So thank you. This is a difficult time to do these types of meetings during a pandemic when we're all trying to get away from each other and stay away from each other, as Judge Russell would tell you.
And, Mr. Chairman, in that regard, I have been in contact with Deb, but I should ask her very specifically if anyone has recently entered the webinar and asked to speak on this item regarding home detention.
Um, first, Mr. Chairman, I do not see.
She's speaking, but.
Who has joined the meeting?
Can you hear her, Nadia? Okay, I'm not getting any notes on my phone, so I don't think anyone has registered in addition to those who were in favor.
Okay. Well, let's go on from there. If you can make sure that we stay in contact with some of these other items because they're awfully important as well. So we'll figure that out. We will go then. Let's just stay off, let's go then to, because county attorney Alistair Adele is here. There's some items coming up under her purview, so we might as well just take those items out of order. She's here in case there's any other questions. We will go to item number 20 through 23 under county officers, Board of Supervisors', appointment and reappointments to the Community Development Advisory Committee. Number 21 is a reappointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. Under county attorney, number 22 is a victim compensation funding from the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. Item 23 is drug, gang, and violent crime control grant from the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. Do I have a motion on these items?
Mr. Chairman?
Move approval.
Okay, I'll take Steve and a second by Bill. That was photo finish. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go on to item number 24, still under county attorney. 24 is an appropriation adjustment for County Attorney General Fund. 25 is grant funds for vertical prosecution of auto theft offenders from Arizona Auto Theft Authority. Under school superintendent, item 26 is request for cash deficit school district levies. So item 24 through 26.
Move approval.
Thank you, Bill. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm going to ask some. Yes, Steve and Jack, I can't hear you guys. Are you on mute? He's saying no. Let's. What's that? There where Deb is. Yeah, something may be happening with. Well, I can definitely, I can definitely see a thumbs up. So how about this? All in favor, say aye. There's a thumbs up. Jack? Okay. And Jack's giving a thumbs up, so, okay. Any ayes? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. We did that and we are done with those two. So the things we get to learn right now, we'll keep working on it. We will go back to Alistair. Thank you guys for joining us, Mr. Vic, Candace. And our judges have just left, so thank you guys for being with us today. We will now go back to order and we will go into the planning and zoning consent hearings. Item six, Solari Ranch Parcels 2 and 3. Number seven, Verde River Unit 1, Neighborhood 2 and 3, Lot 137, replat. Number eight, Northern Farms. Number nine, Shield RV and Boat Storage. Number 10, Zayo Agila. Number 11, T-Mobile PH 60112A Apache Auto. Number 12, ATC Gunpowder WCF. So Fran, I'm going to do this. We hope we can hear it. Are there any speakers or comments received on items six through 12?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask, Maria is the one who is monitoring all of the comments that come in. And you say there is one that's just registering in favor. On which item? On item 10, we have someone that wanted to note that they are in favor of this item.
Okay, thank you for joining us today. I'll just call for the motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve item six through 12. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any, two thumbs up. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And we're going to continue working on why we can't hear Steve and Jack, correct?
Yes, sir.
Gates was supposed to be the technology chairman.
Let me see what's happened.
Humility, Bill. I love it. He's mad.
No, I think it went perfect in your administration, right, during your tenure? And Mr. Hickman just.
Try a pandemic on for size, boys.
Put us right back in the alley.
All right, planning and zoning. We'll move on to item number 13. I am going to call Jen and Jen Pokorski up and Darren Gerard up. You guys have your masks on, so that's good. Darren's going to sit back there in case we need him. So item number 13, Beth Meth Congregation Zone Change Request. This item was continued from the June 24, 2020, meeting. So Jen, if you want to take us through that.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, members of the board. The Beth Meth congregation is asking to rezone the western portion of their property that's currently vacant to R5. And it will be limited to 55-plus housing consistent with the surrounding area. The case was continued from both the April 8 and then the June 24 board meeting to allow Beth Meth to work with the neighboring communities to resolve some concerns that they had regarding the height of the proposed structure that Beth Meth was going to build. So they were very successful in working with their neighbors. The neighboring HOA withdrew their opposition and dependent on two conditions being added to the zoning case. So if I may, I would like to read those two conditions into the record. J and K are in addition to the conditions of approval A through I that are already recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So J is any future plan of development for the subject property shall include a maximum building structure height of 30 feet and a minimum setback of 40 feet from the northwest property line. And then K is all outdoor lighting shall be shielded and directed downward below the horizontal plane to ensure there is no illumination of nor light trespass onto adjacent properties, and there shall be no illuminated signs. So originally, due to the opposition, this required a supermajority vote. The opposition has been withdrawn. However, procedurally, it's cleaner to still do the supermajority vote to make sure that we do it by the book. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Supervisor Chukri, this is in your district?
It's actually in your district, Chairman.
In my district? Okay.
I don't reach as far as Sun City.
Well, Steve has a motion. I forgot.
The sun always shines in District 2. If you'd like us to do a wraparound and include Sun City, we can. And Mr. Chairman, should you be comfortable with this and the stipulations as read by Ms. Pokorski? I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I, God, I'm sitting there trying to figure out how this is going. But yes, we heard from this group and it looks like we've worked extremely hard on it because now that it's brought up about the wall and everything else. So I'm happy that it's come out to this way and with the neighbor's understanding. So it's a house of faith and I'm happy that it's out there. So, yes, Mr. Chukri, if I'm all for approval, I wonder if you have a motion?
I just made it, if that's okay with the clerk as presented?
Yep.
Because you had those additional stipulations.
Yes.
With the additional stipulations?
And I would second that motion.
Awesome. Thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye, but you're going to have to do roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, for the supermajority?
Yes, because of the supermajority, we would be best to do a roll call.
Okay.
And you may need to tell me if I can't hear Mr. Sellers.
Okay, I'll be watching him. Go ahead.
Mr. Sellers, your vote on this item?
Yes.
Oh, good. We're back in sound. Great. And Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Gates?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And Chairman Hickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, Jen and Darren, on that case.
I think on all cases, I think they've had some pretty unique ones.
They've been a little bit busy lately.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Are we still seeing the numbers of applications, permit applications, still be at a record high the past four to five months as we were earlier this year?
Chairman Hickman, Supervisor Chukri, members of the board, yes. We have had very strong permit volume. We're up about 10% over 2019. That has continued through June. The board has recently approved a number of plaats. So that is new homes that are coming on the books. And we also have strong interest in our pre-application meetings, which is the start, the kickoff for the zoning process. And we have a couple larger projects coming through the pipeline. So it's been very consistent. Just this week, we also launched our virtual inspections. So certain inspections that, about seven to pilot, we are doing virtually. So it keeps the public safe.
Certain categories, Jen?
Yes.
Of what, where you are in the process?
So the virtual building inspection, so for like minor electrical permits, minor plumbing permits. We have about seven right now that we're doing. And that helps keep the public safe and keeps our inspectors safe. And we're moving to expand that as well.
And it's expedient, Mr. Chairman. That's the speed of business right there. Jen, you said 10% above 2019. Do we know where these numbers register? I know you're somewhat new to the department, so Darren might know this. Are we, the last time we were at this level, was it 2010? Was it 2000? Was it 2008? Do we have any idea? That's an unfair question, but.
Yeah, it's been years since we've been at, at least, I've looked back about five years and we haven't been at these numbers, but I can certainly get you.
I'd just be curious, Mr. Chairman. I think it's ironic, all this is happening amid a pandemic. And it's just, I don't know, it's more fascinating to me than anything else. But it's good to know and good to know that we're prepared.
It's certainly a bright spot in the economy.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just bringing up that on today's meeting alone, most of the cases are in District 4, a high-growth area that we are going to be talking about now also with this next item. It seems over this last year that there's just tons of dirt moving and everything else going into unincorporated areas, so.
And, Mr. Chair, can I just ask a follow-up on Mr. Chukri's questions? And so Jen, what are you seeing now for the, what percentage of the applications are being done virtually?
We are still consistently in that 70 to 80%.
That's fantastic. That's great. Great work.
Yep, great work to the entire team. Okay, we will go on to the next item in the agenda, which is item number 14, and it's just called Falcon. That is on, yeah, so it's up on our screens. Okay, so what we will do right now is Jason, I'm sorry, Derek and Jennifer, or Darren and Jennifer, I would like a report on this because this is another topic that you guys have been working on for the last couple or several months, actually. So if you could take us through that.
Thank you, Chairman Hickman. This case, military compatibility permit 2019-005 for Falcon. This case, military compatibility permit 2019-005 for Falcon, located in your district, 152nd and Camelback. If I can draw your attention to the slide, the blue outline was the Falcon Golf Course, which is no longer there. And that is the subject property that is seeking the military compatibility permit. You can see the blue lines indicate the high noise accident potential zone for Luke Air Force Base. And the red and the yellow is essentially the runway. So this area is subject to the military compatibility permit to ensure that any use is compatible with Luke and does not impact Luke's flight operations. So this project is seeking a military compatibility permit for the entire section, which is about 157 acres. And the northern half of the property, which is about 79, 80 acres, they have a specific plan of development before the board today for a cross-dock facility, which is essentially a facility where they're gonna transfer loads, mostly palletized loads, from trailers, day, no overnight type of trucking facility. So prior to coming forward with any sort of plan for the southern half of this property, they will have to file a specific plan of development and come before the board again. So it's a military compatibility permit for the whole site, which entitles the uses for the site, and then a specific plan of development for the cross-dock for the northern portion. So there has been significant opposition to this case. As of late yesterday, we received 438 opposition emails and there was an online petition with 2,429 signatures. Almost all the opposition raises concerns regarding traffic along Camelback and also concerns regarding safety at intersections along Camelback, in particular, Saraval and Camelback, which is west of this property, in between this property and the Loop 303. So this slide shows you the jurisdictions. The purple color is Glendale. The non-shaded is unincorporated. Then also the peach color is Goodyear. And the darker purple is Litchfield Park. Glendale has a strip annexation along Camelback Road, so they would be the annexing jurisdiction if they chose to annex in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a question, Jen, not, you know, being familiar with the area. What's that immediately west there with the, kind of the roads that are curly queuing around?
That's a racetrack.
Ah, okay. Is it being operated right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it approving ground or a racetrack?
No, it's a racetrack.
A racetrack.
That was in front of the board predates us. And the racetrack has had some issues with the community. So now it's basically run as almost a private racetrack, if you want to rent it out, if I remember right.
We'll take FedEx trucks out there.
The opposition, as I mentioned, this is military compatibility permit. The opposition has raised some legal concerns regarding the county's military compatibility permit process. Our position and the county attorney's position is that we are correctly administering the military compatibility process and that that issue has no bearing on the case that's before or the decision that's before the board today. And then we've also received eight letters of support, including letters from the Arizona Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, and the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, stating the positive impact that this project could have on the economy in the West Valley. Luke Air Force Base has also indicated that they do not have any objections to the project. So staff had recommended approval of this project to the Planning and Zoning Commission for several reasons. One, the proposal is consistent with the county's area plan. It's consistent with Glendale's general plan. As I mentioned, Glendale would be the annexing jurisdiction if they did choose to annex. The site fronts onto Camelback Road. Camelback Road is under the jurisdiction of the city of Goodyear and is designated as a truck route. Most of the surrounding area to the west is under, is rezoned for industrial and commercial uses. This is a use that's consistent with much of the surrounding area. And the Goodyear general plan designates this area for employment, business park, and industrial uses. Based on these factors, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for this project. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
And reminding my colleagues that it went through P&amp;Z, but it was after two separate meetings because they flat rattled out of time and even had quorum issues on the first time around. So I believe the clock hit eight hours worth of time for people to clearly state what their position was at that point. So we'll go into, let's just go into the applicant right now. Is the applicant going to be on the internet as well? Okay, due to personal spacing? Yes, ma'am?
Stephanie Watney actually was the registered speaker, but she has requested that Jason Morris be her spokesperson.
Okay, so Jason is going to represent the applicant?
Jason, your mic is unmuted.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. Yes, I will be participating this morning and I appreciate the time.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jason. Yes, Mr. Morris, I can, we can hear you. So they're loading up the presentation right now. We can see that and we can hear you, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate your time this morning. I am here virtually on behalf of the applicant, which is Kieran West, which is the developer for FedEx, as was mentioned during some of the previous conversations and at Planning Commission, who is the user of this property. Obviously FedEx is a nationally and internationally known entity, a Fortune 20 company, and they're very much looking forward to developing in this district, especially this project. So I'm going to ask that the slide be advanced. And we can talk a little bit about the site. The site, as you can see, is in a, almost exclusively industrial area at the foot of the Luke Air Force Base runway. I point that out, and as we go to the next slide, it will become more apparent. If you could advance the slide.
We have the site aerial map up.
There we go, thanks. Thank you. As we look at the site itself, it was formerly a golf course, known as the Falcon Golf Course. It is no longer in operation and we'll see some pictures of its current state. What's worth noting from this photo is the fact that we are not only in the Luke Air Force Base area and influence area, we are in fact adjacent to the runway itself and the heart of their operations. The site that we are discussing today, as staff pointed out, is the northern site, putting it a half a mile north of Camelback Road and further away from any of the existing residents. The southern site would have to go through a plan of development before any ultimate development process. The next slide, please.
It's up.
All right, thank you. And I'll ask that we advance one more so that we can be efficient with our time. These are existing site photos. I point this out because, as I mentioned, this was previously utilized as a golf course. It is no longer a golf course and you can see the impact that the Arizona heat and sun have had on what was formerly the golf course area. The next slide, please.
It's up.
In terms of the site context and jurisdiction, this is a unique site in that while we are in Maricopa County, as staff noted, to the north is the planning area for the city of Glendale. To the east is partly Goodyear and the city of Litchfield Park. And immediately to the south is also to the city of Goodyear. So this is really a multi-jurisdictional area, which has made the coordination of this site a function of all of those jurisdictions, but primarily the work of Maricopa County. Next slide, please.
Mr. Morris, can, are you seeing the slides as we are seeing them also? I mean, you're a little bit behind on the slide. I just want to make sure that you're keeping up with it, too.
I apologize. I would hope that you're looking at what we have noted as Slide Number 7, which is Maricopa County White Tanks.
Yeah, we'll just wait for you as you hit it. And if there's any questions you have for us, let me know.
I appreciate it and I'll try and be prompt in going through these slides. In fact, we can look at this slide, and I would ask that you advance it again for time purposes. But you can see that this is the White Tanks Plan from a decade ago. If we look at the White Tanks Plan from two decades ago, we will see the same designation for this site, which is to say this is an industrial site. It has always been designated as an industrial site. It is a function of Luke Air Force Base and what can be done within that property. So this land use and this proposal should come as no surprise, given what is permitted. I would go so far as to say that there are no other uses that we could possibly bring before you on this site because of the severe restrictions, given the noise contours and our adjacent neighbor. So as we look at the next site, I'm sorry, the next slide, and in fact, the two next slides, if we want to continue moving forward, what we will see is that not only has the city of Glendale, in their general plan designated this as industrial, the city of Goodyear has shown it as the transportation plan, and the city of Litchfield Park shows this as a non-residential use, industrial, for future purposes. So with that in mind, it should be clear that there are no other uses available for this property. And in fact, as we look at the city of Goodyear, transportation plan that's part of their general plan, Mr. Chair, this is designated as a future truck access point, taking folks from the 303 east to the other industrial properties in this truck corridor. Next slide, please. The future truck route is indicated in, by Goodyear on this site, shows that this is the area that will not only be a future truck route, but is intended as an employment area for the city of Goodyear within their general plan. Next slide, please. Within Maricopa County, this is also subject to the military airport and ancillary facility overlay, meaning that, as you can see from this, every portion of the area in red is severely restricted as to the types of uses that can be made. In fact, not only are they non-residential uses, but as we'll see, if we can look at the next slide as well, that this is an area that even commercial and retail is not permitted. So this is the request before you. Next slide, please, which is the military compatibility permit with our plan of development. And I wanted to have the board understand, if at all possible, what a cross-dock facility is. And for our purposes, I think there have been concerns that this is not the type of use that should be anywhere in proximity to residential uses. I want to assure you that FedEx not only operates these within proximity to residential uses, the major concern is also about how they look, how they act, what type of neighbor they are. And as you can see from this slide, and I'll ask that you proceed through the next two slides. You can pause there for a moment, but just to give a sense of how these operate, thank you, and what type of uses surrounding them. It's not unusual to have these type of uses. The constant with all of these uses is that they are typically adjacent to freeway systems, as you can see from this site. If we could advance the slide, please. And one more slide, please, although that shows the Portland site, which is adjacent to both residential and a golf course facility. This project is, as staff noted, a cross-dock facility, meaning as part of FedEx Freight, this is palletized materials. This is being delivered by one FedEx truck to another FedEx truck with all activity occurring indoors. All of the trucks that will be a part of this property and a part of this facility are owned and operated by FedEx and they are employing the drivers who will drive them on a daily basis, meaning that we will not see independent contractors. FedEx will have complete control over the utilization of the site, the routes, the drivers themselves. And these are not long-haul drivers. These are all employees who will sleep in their own bed at night that have routes that allow them to return back to this facility or to their home. Next slide, please. I should also point out, because this is somewhat unusual, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, that this is proposed as a LEED-certified facility. Sustainability is incredibly important to FedEx and they are putting their money where their mouth is. And this facility, not all of their cross-dock facilities are LEED-certified buildings, but if this will be a new build, it will be certified by the U.S. Green Building Council. Next slide, please. This gives you a conceptual perspective. Although the site is larger at 80 acres, the actual footprints of the building and where the activities will take place is relatively limited. It is, we'll bet, over 200,000 square feet. And as I mentioned, all of the activities occur indoors. Next slide, please. Next slide. Mr. Chair, I'm going to focus on the traffic generation because I think that has been an important part of the conversation. And certainly for those who are opposed to this use, one of the bigger concerns along Camelback Road, which is our access point to the 303. As you can see, the heavy vehicle distribution, meaning any of the trucks associated with this, the distribution of traffic is 90% going westbound to the 303 with 10% going eastbound. And that eastbound traffic is limited, as we've agreed and as we've talked about, that would only be for local deliveries. It would be in that area. And by local delivery, I should be very clear, these are business. There is no residential delivery. There is no residential delivery purpose or function as part of this facility. The passenger cars, as you would expect, have employees coming to the site and leaving the site are evenly distributed between the east and the west. Next slide, please. And I'm focusing on the heavy vehicles here. You saw the daily trips was about 3,400 in the previous slide, which is all of the passenger cars and the truck traffic together. That number is essentially a trip in and a trip out of this facility. So while it says 34, roughly half of that number, essentially 1,700, would be the actual vehicle numbers. In terms of the heavy traffic itself, the daily trips that are anticipated are 1170. So that gives you a sense of, and again, that number is a trip in and a trip out. So essentially, half of those numbers would be a distinct vehicle on this site. Next slide, please. And I'm going to go through these in rapid succession, so if I can get some assistance in sort of just continuing to move forward on these slides. This gives you a sense that this has not been done in a vacuum, Mr. Chair. These traffic reviews go back some time. This is a February traffic review from the city of Goodyear. The next slide will indicate some of the design standards that were changed as a result of traffic comments from surrounding jurisdictions. of traffic comments from surrounding jurisdictions. The next slide, this slide shows what the initial review was, and we had initially intended two access points, and we added a different access point at the intersection at the request of the surrounding jurisdiction to ensure that traffic was metered and taken care of and not a safety hazard at this location. This gives you an indication of some of the Camelback Road improvements, because the area is undergoing a tremendous change, as you indicated before calling this case. There's a lot of activity in this corridor, and these roadways are being built in this instance. All of these improvements that are shown will take place before the building is operational. Next slide, please. I, I should also point out that the Board of Supervisors, on their June agenda, just last month, at the end of last month, approved funds for the installation of a traffic signal at, at Saroval and Camelback. Currently, there's only a stop sign at that location, but in conjunction with the city of Goodyear and the county, there will be a traffic signal at that location. And while that is off of our property, we have been tracking that, because it will have an impact on the overall flow of traffic for all of the users on Camelback Road moving forward. Next slide, please. And, and next slide. This gives you an overview of some of the industrial that's occurring in this area and how it impacts our site. This site, sorry, the, the slide that was in front of you briefly, there we go. PVE 303 is probably the largest industrial user in this area. And I, I use this slide to illustrate a few things, Mr. Chair. First, we are certainly not the biggest user on the block, not even close, and we are also much further away from residential than some of the other users. What you are looking at is the most recent site plan that's approved through the city of Goodyear along Camelback Road. This would be immediately across the street from the proposal that we are bringing forward. Now, given that this is not only across the street, but, you know, the size of our buildings come nowhere near the size of the overall total square footage, we're looking at 4,200,000 square feet of approved industrial. This is a variety of industrial-type users, obviously the largest box at a million 250 is, is sized for a very significant distribution or fulfillment-type center. And you can see from this map, its proximity to the residential and immediately adjacent to it. As we look at the next slide, I, I would just point out that at 200,000 square feet, our building is smaller than the majority of the buildings there, and in fact, would be roughly the size of that, just one building. And this gives you an indication of where our site is versus where we just showed you the site plan. But what I'd like to point out in this slide is that the trips associated with the land use plan that I just shared with you is largely in excess. In fact, just the blue portion would be roughly 7,600 daily trips. And as we go to the next slide, we'll also get a sense of what that total traffic could be across the street. These are traffic estimates. Because there is very flexible zoning across the street from us in Goodyear, there are a variety of different types of uses that could take place, whether it's industrial park, general office building, if there's a combination of retail and office or industrial park, or all three, you see those numbers go up exponentially. But more importantly, our numbers don't come anywhere near the type of usage that we already see approved in this corridor. Next slide, please. And, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, to give you a holistic look at this corridor and why Goodyear would have designated it as an industrial truck route, we can see the total amount of new industrial and existing industrial in this area. These indications on this map, other than the proposal, which is boxed in green, these are all approved uses on this, in this area, in this corridor. So we're talking about essentially millions of square feet of industrial that are all taking advantage of the Luke 303. One of the most recent is a 615-acre industrial P A D on the west side of Luke 303. You see that outlined in gray. But even adjacent to the racetrack, essentially one parcel away from us, there are two significant industrial buildings that have been approved just west of us, within Glendale's jurisdiction. Next slide, please. And, and just by way of information, certainly the industrial was known for some time, and to that end, there were notes that were placed on the plat of industrial, of residential projects in proximity. So this would be the final plat for Palm Valley 9, and we've shown that there are two significant notes on there for any purchasers who are buying within those subdivisions, indicating that this is an area that is subject to all of the indications of the Luke Air Force Base and what we would expect, including the munitions storage depot, and that there, this is also an industrial area and may be subject to potential noise and traffic with all of the things that would be attendant to industrial uses. Next slide, please. And we can go through these next slides if you would continue advancing. I just wanted to point out that Litchfield Park does have a provision within their code as to what, where trucks are allowed, and in fact, unless there is a delivery occurring within Litchfield Park, there is no truck traffic that can go east through Litchfield Park from this site, and we have also agreed to restrict that further. As we go to the next slide. And I apologize if it's taking longer for my computer to load than it's coming in front of you, Mr. Chair. This is an updated truck restriction ordinance that Litchfield Park passed during our pendency of this case. In fact, it has, it is now in effect, but this is, this occurred after our case was filed. Next slide, please. And we will adhere to all of Litchfield Park's restrictions. Next slide. I appreciate your patience, we're just wrapping up. This is, I'm going to ask again that we go through these next slides rather quickly. This slide shows that nothing can be permitted, as you can see where the north half of that property, which are both beyond the 75 L V N, meaning that nothing can be built in that property that is a residential or commercially used or has traditional occupancies other than industrial uses. So we are very much limited as to what can occur. Next slide, please. These are a series of letters, and we can go through the next three slides relatively quickly. Feel free to advance all of those. These are just communication with the county and with Luke Air Force Base, confirming that this is an approved use, this will have no impact on their flight operations. The next slide, please. And we will also see the most recent letter from Luke Air Force Base reconfirming the approval of the use, which was a June, next slide, please, a June letter, indicating that despite some previous concerns, we've met with them individually. And now, as a result of the changes that have been made and the approvals, next slide, please. That there are no concerns, and that this impact, this will have no negative impact on Luke Air Force Base. Next slide, please. And in order to get those letters of approval, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we worked significantly with Luke Air Force Base to ensure that we added all of the precautions that they are looking for in terms of development. This gives you an area overview. There was a comment about a munitions storage building. I just wanted to point out that Luke's munitions storage is actually closer to residential uses than it is this proposal. Next slide, please. Briefly, and, and in conclusion, we're going to go through the employment. I, I think, given country is going through in terms of the economic impact of the pandemic, it's worth noting that this is a significant employer for the area. And not only in terms of a proposal, but we are dealing with a company that is known for its employee benefits, and it is known for its employee retention. So as we can go to the next slide, we can talk about the impact overall and what we're looking at. We had an economic impact study done on the site, and this shows both the construction impact, like $78 million total economic impact. And the next slide will show you the annual operations and the impact that that will have on this area at $152 million. Next slide, please. I will leave it there, Mr. Chair. I'm sure you're delighted to see a slide that says conclusions on it. But this area, as I pointed out, has been envisioned for industrial uses since there have been land plans on this property. No other types of uses are permitted to this property owner. The site is 2,500 feet from the nearest residential-y-zone property. These residents have been on notice since they moved to this area, as to what this area entails in terms of land use plan. We've been careful with our lighting. We are making improvements to Camelback Road at the expense of the property owner, that it'll be significant for this area. Our traffic will be going westbound to 303 and not eastbound. Every driver is a FedEx employee, as I noted. All equipment and vehicles are tracked, they are branded, and they are controlled by FedEx. We're talking about a LEED-certified building, and ultimately, very significant economic impacts. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Morse, let's, let's hold off on the questions for a second, because some, some questions might also come up that need to be asked, not only from my colleagues, but, but also to P and Z. At this point, I want everyone to know that we've, we find ourselves in these spaces quite often with a growing county. As Supervisor Chukri points out, quite often, we are the fastest-growing county in the United States for, what, three years running? And growth, as I talked about earlier today, growth is really, really coming into District 4. And I've been on this board now for seven years, and I, I think that I have the most amount of cases in front of us in, in this history, because largely, when I took this role, Maricopa County, at that time, I had somewhere like 670,000 unincorporated acres in, in my district alone, which is, I think, still the most amount of unincorporated. But they become incorporated due to growth, and we've got several municipalities now that are bumping into each other. Glendale just had that on the screen. That was a recent annexation, as they are, as they are planning and talking to an applicant that will have two much larger facilities right on Camelback. My family's been impacted. I'll go over this again. My family's been impacted also. I used to live on 67th M, Missouri. People didn't want to live next to a chicken farm. Moved to 91st Avenue in Orangewood, then people came again, didn't want to live next to a chicken farm. Then we moved out again. So just in my history of, of being involved with our family business, we have moved three times, and it doesn't seem moving is ever far enough. But we still have to stay next to this customer base that we have called Phoenix, Metropolitan When I had a, when I first became chairman four years ago, my first run, I did a little video, and if you can remember, I was, not the shower scene, not the shower scene, but, but there was a part where I ran through rose fields and took a, took a video of that. Well, those rose fields now are sprouting a white claw funeral, or funeral, yeah, basically, a white claw factory that has been enticed to, to come there. And the farmers that own that land couldn't have been happier to sell, to sell that land, and that's just the American way. And we're seeing a little bit of this right now also. I'm concerned about traffic in the West Valley. We've talked about it over and over again, so much so that just last month, we voted to spend some money on a, on a signal light that we're going to get to. I drive this, I drive this road, Camelback, every day, coming, either going to my work at the ranch or coming back from it, just so I can keep an eye on it. Disheartening a little bit to see a, a golf course that was being utilized now is quite possibly going to be sprouting something industrial. It's nice to look over and see a golf course and seeing people on there, but that golf course has melted away in just in the last month of getting ripped apart, because it's no longer going to be a golf course. It's painful to watch the valley get swallowed up by houses, but houses also need jobs associated with them, too. Traffic sometimes is a function of people leaving their houses and driving a long way to go to a job. Most of the Val, the West Valley drives a long way away and gets on the freeways now and, and drives elsewhere, and impacts the traffic area in, in those communities. But now, jobs are leaps and bounds are coming out to the West Valley, and it's called growth. The other thing is Camelback. All of us are familiar with Camelback. Camelback is a main arterial, all the way, probably runs through portions of all of our districts. It's, I believe that this is the only place left that where it's still one lane. You guys from the East Valley might find it hard to believe that Camelback goes to a one-lane area, but this is, this is where it is. In fact, right here, I'm always worrying about the safety part of that one lane with a, with the higher and higher traffic, because there's a wide-open ditch that you don't see much in Phoenix anymore, even though on the two farms that I used to live, that used to drive my mom crazy with a wide-open ditch right in front of the streets that, that we used to live on. Those ditches have either been filled in or covered up with tiling or, or cement tubes now, and they still are bringing vital water to the West Valley, but things have changed. And the only way that you can get that is, and get that safety aspect out of there for kids that might drown in their, by their front yard is, is growth. And the companies that are coming to, to do that, and that's why we're here. That's where stipulations come from, that's why we have traffic studies and, and we need to work with the applicant. I'm going to, oh, yeah, talking to residents. I have been talking to residents now for three months. Sometimes, when I'm sitting for dinner in a Litchfield Park restaurant, where people need to come and tell me what their thoughts are about this one facility. And I just wish I had this area map of, to hand people and say, are you seriously worried about this one? Look at what is going to, that's already planned, that is going to be up against your back wall. You're not even going to be able to see this facility here shortly. So, because you're going to be concerned with the back wall. But the city of Goodyear did that and zoned for it, and did it maybe before they bought their house, or maybe they just didn't realize. But this whole area is transforming because of the 303. And that was a, at first part, a county road, and with some vision, and now... And that was, at first part, a county road and with some vision, and now it is a freeway that is bringing large jobs. I asked Mr. Morris to, you know, with these types of projects, sometimes we don't, the resident doesn't even know who's coming. We have to vote on things called, you know, projects that you don't even know much about the company. I think this thing started with no one knowing who was behind it, but now we all know, FedEx. I wanted to clearly state that. And the reason why is FedEx is not known as a bad, poorly-operated company. I can tell you firsthand, a friend of mine who passed away from cancer five years ago used to be running their safety department on training drivers. And I would go over how FedEx trains their drivers and what they have at their disposal, and I couldn't feel stronger that there's a company out there in logistics that has a better safety program. And that hits at the traffic issue. I have three kids that are going to be learning how to drive, so don't want anything happening to them. So, I'm not happy about training a new driver. It's scary, and I got three of them coming. So, with that, I feel strongly, especially with FedEx, you know, as Luke Schlosser are the chairman currently at the P and Z, he had an eight-hour meeting, as I touched on, talking to residents. He was under the same impact. He talked about having tough calls that were with his family dentist, tough calls with his dad's former business partner, because they all have come out into that area and bought beautiful houses, and they want to maintain a beautiful neighborhood. So he had to go through that. But because of where he was, working at times with P and Z through Levine, when he was chairman there of that village planning committee with Goodyear, he touched on what this would look like to other cities getting something like this. He told straight out, he cannot understand why Litchfield Park or Goodyear, because if it was coming to them, they would probably write press releases talking about being able to entice a wonderful organization like FedEx is. So, and by the way, I did a lot of work looking into FedEx, and I believe that they were in the top 20 of most admired companies in Fortune for the last 18 years running. And you get admired because people like using them and people like working for them. And I know their services are needed out in the West Valley. The model of logistics and products have changed. They're now being delivered to your doorstep. And we can't, we need to be close, and they need to be close to the consumer that demands their services. They can't go further and further out in the sticks like us poor farmers seem to be having to do over the last 50 years. So, I am going to ask, because of what I've heard, we've been working hard, Scott, Jen, Darren, we've been working very diligently to try to answer these questions since that P and Z meeting and even before it. There is a lot of concern. So, what I wanted to go over before I start asking for the people that are on the phone, we've been working on stipulations, Jennifer, and I was wondering if you could read some of that, that might get to the heart of some of this opposition and what this applicant will need to do. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. We did develop some potential stipulations that could address some of the concerns, as you mentioned. Read them into the record. We have stipulations, essentially A through originally K, and I will just touch on the ones that were revised in there and then also touch on new ones. So, in stipulation I, where it lays out the standards for the military compatibility permit, it would change the maximum light pole height from 110 feet to 45 feet to address some of the lighting concerns. Stipulation K, which was added at the Planning and Zoning Commission and then further changed for clarity and to address some of the concerns, would read, "With the exception of routes for deliveries in the city of Litchfield Park, inbound heavy vehicles will inter-site on Camelback Road from the west. Heavy vehicle egress onto Camelback Road headed eastbound at the 152nd Avenue alignment shall be limited to delivery routes to Litchfield Park only in compliance with the city of Litchfield Park's truck restriction ordinance." And then, new stipulations. L, "In addition to the developer's typical improvement obligations, the developer shall contribute to the cost of the design, construction, and/or installation of a traffic signal and/or related intersection improvements at Saraville Avenue and Camelback Road not to exceed a maximum of $150,000 prior to issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy or certificate of occupancy." M, "The existing drainageway channel adjacent to Camelback Road shall be relocated out of the right-of-way and relocated within the subject property. The relocated drainageway channel shall be maintained in a clean and weed-free manner and designed to limit any vegetation or overgrowth." And then N, "The applicant shall install a traffic signal at the intersection of 152nd Avenue, Camelback Road, and pay its proportional share of the signal construction cost in accordance with the approved traffic impact study." And then finally, O, "The applicant shall construct an additional access along the western boundary of the site to provide primary heavy vehicle ingress and egress for the project to Camelback Road. The improvements shall include additional Camelback Road widening for all required deceleration lanes extending beyond the property frontage. Entry/exit from said access point shall be limited to left-in, right-in, right-out only when the ultimate Camelback Road improvements are constructed."
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Appreciate the hard work on getting this. Some of these have come from municipalities speaking with, along with ourselves, of course, but municipalities speaking with the applicant as well. Mr. Morris, are you still there? Mr. Morris?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So you heard those possible stipulations, and I wanted to ask you, because some of these have dollar figures on them, do you and the applicant agree with the extra mitigation and costs associated with these steps?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was making notes while Ms. Bukorski was reading those out and discussing them with the applicant, yes. I believe we are prepared to do that. It's somewhat unusual to have an off-site commitment that far away, but we also recognize, from FedEx's perspective, from the applicant's perspective, that this is an important intersection. So we are willing to make those additional expenditures, as well as the rest of the stipulations for site purposes.
Yeah, especially that traffic signal is not close to you, but it's further down the pike. And as I drive home and maybe some of those residents, that stop sign there that chokes off traffic is sometimes already makes traffic back up almost a mile, waiting to go through a four-lane stop. And the city of Goodyear needs to understand that, and I think they do. And it is not a usual thing to ask an applicant for, but totally corresponding to continue to have their trucks moving through a safer intersection instead of starting and stopping is probably going to do a whole lot to stop accidents from happening. So I appreciate that. And let you know, that's on the record now. So, then that would mean that we have now are putting, being capable of putting $300,000 to improve the intersection of Camelback and Saraville and not just asking the city of Goodyear to do that. So they can start working on that. Hopefully, with the money in the bank, they can start working on that intersection immediately. So I will be making a phone call to the Goodyear mayor about that. Widening and improving that open ditch that I talked about on Camelback will help alleviate safety concerns. And something that people do not realize, it's going to help Luke Air Force Base a lot. Over the last five years, this is an open ditch that grows reeds, weeds, and assorted other fauna that might just jump right into a jet engine. And doing this type of ditch work is going to help the county out, is going to help the county resident, and it hopefully will decrease the chance of affecting Luke Air Force Base flight operations. And I want to let you know how much I appreciate that as well. So, we're going to go on. There's people on the phone. And I will ask Fran, is there an update on who is in the phone waiting to speak for my colleagues?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Deb has, Deb who is off-site but monitors the...
Your microphone's off. Go ahead.
And my microphone needs to be on in order for you to hear me. Yes, Mr. Chairman. There are seven people in the queue, and I believe if I could turn it over to Deb where she could announce them because she can see them in the queue and be able to speak their name. And I believe that there's a request that we go with a two-minute comment. However, I believe the last person is Larry Lazarus, who is representing a fairly large group there and giving him some additional time to make his comments.
Okay. Well, let's go, and that's standard procedure here, even when we are not suffering through a pandemic, that we give people two minutes to speak. So, can you, Deb, can you tell me, are you going to tell us everyone who's in order so they'll know their place in line? Or are you going to announce them one by one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can go ahead and list the order that we currently have, and we're just going through pretty much how we receive them in. Dominic Passio will be first, Donald Losi, and Fred Van Etten, Guy Hatch, John Connolly, Thomas Schoeff, and Larry Lazarus will be the order.
Okay. So we'll first call Mr. and have Mr. Dominic Passio step up to the phone. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Passio.
Mr. Passio, if you could unmute your microphone.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Passio. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today and to the rest of the board supervisors. I appreciate this. Thank you. So I'll just go ahead and jump right into it here. My name's Dominic Passio. I live at 15162 West Roma Ave in Palm Valley Phase Five, and I am the current HOA Board President. I, like many others, oppose this Falcon Cross Dock facility, and there are many reasons why this is a bad idea. Like you stated before, Mr. Chairman, safety, noise, air pollution, traffic are all concerns that we have. We have heard the applicant now on multiple occasions, and he keeps trying to sell us on how great this facility will be and its employment opportunities. He has also addressed many different complaints, but he never addressed the main concern that many of us have, and that's the increase in the traffic noise and the big safety issue because of where this facility is going to be built. This applicant also talks about how the facility is far from the houses, how everything will be kept indoors, and how we will not hear any noise. I beg to differ, sir. I am approximately a quarter mile on the south side of the development. I can hear the racetrack on weekends, and I hear the trucks travel through Camelback right now. Even his own slides that he just showed you, all the facilities that are built there are offset from a residential area, not directly in front of them. The applicant also stated that the trucks are not allowed to be driven east on Camelback. This does not help PvP V traffic and safety issues. According to the applicant, there's going to be 3,418 trips in and out of the facility daily. According to the Maricopa County Department of Transportation May 2019 report on traffic accidents, Camelback currently supports 15,000 vehicles a day. If we add those 3,000-plus vehicles to the road, that's 24% increase, and 1,170 of those will be heavy vehicles. This coupled with other projects in the same area that are supposed to be built makes our issue even worse. I just want to know who's overseeing the entire building projects in this area, and can Camelback and 303 handle all this increased traffic even after the road improvements and facilities are built? Go ahead. I have a lot more here, but since I only have two minutes, I will fast forward. So one of my biggest concerns I have right now is 152nd Ave. And for all the other board supervisors, if you're not familiar with our neighborhood, Palm Valley Phase Five is a very big community. We have 1,463 homes divided into 10 different subdivisions, and 152nd Ave cuts right in the middle of it. On the west, we have Maybach Page Elementary School, and on the east, we have Western Sky Middle School and Millennium High School. A lot of our children walk through 152nd to get to their schools, and the only way for them to reach that is through, like I said, 152nd. There's no way around it. So the reason this is a concern is because there's going to be a massive increase in traffic on 152nd when people realize that they can cut from that traffic light, cut up 152nd to Indian School, and then hit 303 that way, not having to deal with those big rigs. So if you can, please consider how many lives will be impacted by a heavy industrial facility like this one right in front of our main access to our neighborhood. Many residents in this neighborhood have spent between $300,000 and $600,000 of purchased homes in this neighborhood. A lot of people, when they bought their house, we chose this area because we love the residential feel and because of the minimal amount of traffic. We were willing to pay higher property taxes to stay away from other more congested areas. We realize this is changing, and we can accept it, and we don't want to stop growth, but we want a smart growth. There are many other uses for this land, even with the presence of the Air Force Base.
Mr. Passio?
For example. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and go. I gave you longer than two minutes, so I'm going to have to go to the next speaker. So know that you're being heard, okay?
Okay, okay, sir. I only have one more sentence, so.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate you. Thank you for letting me speak. I know I did a little long. I thought we were going to have a little bit more time.
Okay. No, that's fine. I appreciate your attendance. Next up, Deb.
Mr. Chairman, it's Donald Losi, and I also have received a request from Mr. Van Etten to allow Mr. Connolly and Mr. Schoeff go before him. So we will go, Mr. Losi?
I can't, I'm not going to do that because I said what the pattern will be. So we'll go ahead and let Mr. Losi go next.
Very good. Mr. Losi, your mic has been unmuted.
Thank you very much. I wanted to reaffirm my email to Chairman Hickman and the supervisors in opposition to the proposed Cross Dock facility. Representative John Lewis said, "When something seems wrong, you need to say something, do something." Well, that's exactly what hundreds and hundreds of residents have done already about this Cross Dock facility. During the zoning commission hearings this May, the commissioners heard the outcry from the resident communities and the city officials of Litchfield Park and Goodyear, the threats to life, safety, health, and general welfare of the communities. Nonetheless, apart from two exceptions, they recommended approval of this permit to this board today. It's true, this facility may bring jobs and some economic benefit, but the burdens it brings outweigh these benefits. One can only visualize the congestion brought by the 24/7 operation of over thousands of semi-trailer trips per day and the risk they bring to the daily commuters, the school buses, the soccer moms and kids, and the pedestrians along this very narrow section of Camelback Road. There's an omen of bad happenings. There are alternatives, most logically locating this facility west of 303, not the Falcon Site.
Mr. Losi?
It could also be...
Mr. Losi, you're breaking up. Mr. Losi?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. You broke up, and you're breaking up very badly.
Oh, well, I'm sorry about that. There's no rush to approve this application. Please take time to consider alternatives. As Commissioner Montoya said, one of the two nays in a democracy... As Commissioner Montoya said, one of the two nays in a democracy, the voices of the neighborhood people need to be heard. Please listen to us. I respectfully thank you for this opportunity to oppose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Losi, I appreciate it, and I appreciate your attendance today. Next up, Deb, would be Mr. Van Etten?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
Thank you for the, thank you for the chance to speak. I'd like to point out that the applicant's site aerial view did not, he skipped over the part that it said that Camelback will need significant improvements prior to it be, being able to be a major truck route. While I appreciate the stipulation on the lighting, that doesn't, we have heard nothing that will address the topic of the additional traffic congestion. We've heard nothing that talks about the mitigations that could be performed and need to be performed for both noise and dust pollution. And I ask that you consider all of these things prior to coming to your decision. I think that the other thing that needs to be considered is that the other industrial developments that are being proposed are all much, much closer to the 303. I think that you could consider them to be easy on, easy off. The reason for the understandable opposition that you're seeing throughout the community is that the ex-Falcon location is quite a far distance from the 303. It is frankly smack dab next to significant residential developments. The applicant continually says that this development is the only thing that could be done. I suggest that is incorrect, while I agree that commercial needs to go in. There are many other things that could go in that would not have large traffic flows, and I suggest that you consider whether this is the correct development for the associated communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us, and I will tell you, because it's hard to see on a map, but I've driven it over and over again, this facility is located 1.8 miles from the 303 on the one side, and it is 1.6 miles of it to the, let's see, to the west of Litchfield Road. So, it is not, being that it's not smack dab in the middle, it's relatively close. So, I just wanted that for perspective because it's hard to see that on the map. Okay, thank you for joining us today. Next up is Mr. Guy Hesch.
Thanks for letting me speak, getting my speak on time, but I appreciate your time. I'd like to start with, any of the residents would gladly invite anybody to take up the rocker, to sit in the backyard in the early evening, and after 10:00 p.m. to just listen to the quietness of this area, even with Camelback being a main east-west access to 303 and east into the city. All roads from this location going south is a safety issue. By the time this is built out next year, everything will be back to a normal, school-aged children walking, biking, skateboarding, using the crosswalks to go to school five days a week, 152nd down 152nd Avenue is the quickest way to Indian School from the Cross Dock. If even 10% of the 1,200 to 1,600 trucks are light duty used for local deliveries, most of them will be used in 152nd Avenue to get to their locations going east or going west of 303. It would take too much time using Camelback to get to the 303. Per day, all day, 24/7, and that is for non-event days where the increase would be exponentially more. There is all the yearly holidays. The average trucks per day for any year going forward will greatly increase. No business goes into business thinking it's not going to grow. This is going to be a disaster for the lifestyle we all bought into. We're not against what FedEx wants to do, only the location. And will FedEx be paying $10,000 the percent of increase these roads will be used? Any future commitments for paying for use? Since FedEx is neither in Goodyear, Litchfield Park, Avondale, or any city, it isn't taxed for maintenance of our infrastructure, what say you? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us today. Now, I'll go to Mr. John Connolly.
All right, I'm going to go really quick. So, two things, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak, and the two of the things Morris said, I agree with some of the information he showed you, but he failed to show you the scale. So, even though it is 1.8 miles from the freeway, if you scale that against the St. Louis location and the other location, they are not the same scale. Those were built 35 years ago, they would not be able to be built today without the challenge you're dealing with today. So, I'm going to go into my prepared statement. To all the members of the board, thank you in advance for your time. My name is John Connolly, I'm the homeowner and HOA president at Litchfield Greens. I'm going to speak more on the process. I personally and professionally believe that we are on the receiving end of a project with a predetermined outcome. From the purchase, MCP application, and the planning and zoning commission, now the board, this project has been on a high-speed rail, worked in a vacuum as far as the public is concerned, and void of any involvement. Again, I feel I'm wasting my breath and speaking to a wall, but I will continue. The MCP was never intended to weaponize proper zoning processes. We all understand that this may need to be rezoned and industrialized, but the development needs to be also compatible with us, your constituents. It is not. The 300-foot criteria for rezoning does not mean that you do not communicate and collaborate with the impacted party when you're building a massive industrial complex across the street from them that started as vacant land or a golf course. And this is only Phase 1. As I speak, ALSUP 303, another cross dock actually in a better location, and if this was in that location, you would not have this pushback. I'll tell you right now, it dwarfs both of these projects with over 7,500 trips a day and 100 during peak time. Who is looking at all the cumulative effects of all the build-outs out here? Where is the leadership? Where is the oversight? Where is the strategic vision and partnership with the public? We just don't see it. Both Cali and its council stated there's no other use for the property, and they're saying it can't be a business park, offices, storage units, solar farm, manufacturing facility, et cetera. Void of any collaboration and public participation, all possible solutions, mitigations, and alternatives are taken off the table. We were shut out. We lost any possibility on a land swap, a northwest exit along Luke's Fence to get to Bethany Home where there are no homes, or adjustments to any scale of the project. Short version, this is a property flip of a pier that is two to three parcels east of where it should be. If this was, if it was in that location again, you would have had our support. We're being told it has to be this owner, this parcel, mind you, he has a parcel on MC-85 in the middle of nowhere, which FedEx doesn't care where they're at, they can build there. It has to be that project and no exceptions, no changes, and no modification. This is a high-impact industrial facility that started as a golf course across the street from a high-density residential neighborhood. Again, where is the leadership? Who is watching for our interests? Right now, it is nobody. It is unimaginable that in this day and age where we rely on transparency, communication, and collaboration, that Maricopa County has actually figured out a way to not do that and appears to enjoy it at this point. Please work us and do not work against us. The Maricopa County Vision Statement, one of the best I've ever seen. Do you believe a vote for this project is in alignment with it? From mission to vision to values, it speaks about ensuring residents enjoying a healthy and safe environment, working collaboratively, being responsive to the customer, the public is your customer. It speaks to public interest first, open and honest communication, being accountable with relentless improvement, and again, collaboration. None of this process fell with any of this descriptor. If anything, it's been the entire opposite. To approve this, you will have to completely abandon your vision statement. I challenge each and every one of you to take a drive, get off on the 303, and head east on Camelback. Keeping a high-impact, high-trucking facility in the back of your mind, there will be a point on that road where a reasonable person will say, "This is not a good idea." They're about a half-mile off, Chairman, just a half-mile. I ask you to reject this application. There is no rule or regulation that says you have to approve it just because it complied with the MCP. This MCP was used as a supplement and should have been used in addition to normal zoning processes, which we could have been a part of.
Okay, John?
The minimum on behalf of the two, yes, sir.
I've let you go on because, because I do, I do, I did have a nice conversation with you, and I do know that you unofficially or officially represent other, other people in the neighborhood that have some of the same thoughts you did, but I'm going to have to ask you to tie it up.
All right, I will get to my last sentence here. So, the proposed facility could forever change the character of our neighborhood, the quiet enjoyment of our healthy lifestyle, property values, traffic flows in the area. It's important to be part of the process and solution. After today, this will not be over with upcoming elections. Fred Smith, FedEx CEO, he actually takes voicemails, he takes emails, he takes faxes. We're going to fully engage with FedEx and let them know what their landlord is going to be doing to our area.
Okay.
I ask you again, as the elected representatives, please do not ignore us.
And John, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate it. I don't feel like I've ignored anybody in this for quite a while now, so, but I appreciate it, I appreciate you joining up the meeting. I will now ask for Mayor Tom Schoeff, who is representing Litchfield Park. Mr. Mayor, thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you, thank you Supervisor Hickman, Mr. Chair. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and also thank you for all the time and effort I know that this county has put into this question. Litchfield Park has been in opposition to this proposal for, for the time, for the time in which we learned, from the time in which we first learned about it. Unfortunately, the city was not included in the process by, by county staff, and so we came to the table quite late. Our concern is protecting our residents from impacts that can come from this, this development. So, once we became aware of it, we spent the time to work with the applicant's representatives and city staff and the applicant's representatives negotiated four stipulations that we felt were important to protect the impacts on Litchfield Park residents. The applicant agreed to the four stipulations, and as of last night, I had an email, a copy of an email from the applicant's attorney indicating that the applicant agreed with all four stipulations, and in turn, the city had agreed not to oppose this application based upon those stipulations. And now today, it appears from what we've heard from county staff that only three of the four stipulations have been included in, in the staff's recommendation to the board.
Hold on one second. Jen Pacorski would like to say something about that. Hold on, Tom, let me get an answer for that.
We did receive four stipulations. They, the stipulation that was not included was already addressed through the other stipulations, but we can certainly call that up if that would, the mayor would prefer that to be added. It was addressed through our stipulations and our ordinance, so we felt that it was covered as is.
I believe the one that's not included is, is an agreement by the applicant to inform any subsequent tenants of this property of the ordinances which impact the direction trucks may be able to go from the facility. And that, that communication with any subsequent users of the property is important to Litchfield Park because we want to minimize the chance of arguments about whether the, whether the property, you know, whether the property owner can be cited for violating that ordinance, and so we would like to have that ordinance at least be provided to the tenant as part of the process of releasing this facility to some, to some other third party.
Mr. Mayor?
I think it's an important stipulation, and I didn't, I've been told by my attorney...
Mr. Mayor? Let me get, Mr. Mayor, let me get to that then, because I, you don't have the benefit of looking at, at our P&amp;D staff, so Ms. Pacorski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The other stipulation that mentions that they have to comply with the City of Litchfield Park's truck restriction ordinance, it doesn't matter who is the owner of the, or the operator of the facility, the zoning is going to run with the property, but I have that stipulation in front of me about them receiving the copy, and we can certainly add that if that is preferred.
Do you prefer that?
I prefer it only because we spent, we spent hours upon hours upon hours working with the applicant to negotiate four stipulations that were part of an integrated...
Okay, Tom, Tom, I know, I've been working, I've been working on this, I've been working on this too. Ms. Pacorski, you want to read what that stipulation would be?
Sure, that would be stipulation, hold on, I have to get my, it would be P, I have to make sure I know my alphabet. Stipulation P, "The applicant shall provide an accurate and current copy of the City of Litchfield Park City Code, Article 126, Restriction of Truck Travel Upon City Streets, or any successor ordinance governing truck routes, heavy vehicle traffic, and deliveries through and within the City of Litchfield Park, parentheses, Truck Restriction Ordinance, parentheses, to any tenant, subsequent user, or owner of the site, and require them to execute a form acknowledging receipt of such ordinance prior to commencing operations on-site."
Okay. Tom, did you hear that?
Yeah, that is the other stipulation, so if we can add that in, then the city will drop any opposition to the proposal.
Okay, thank you. It will, it will be, it will be added in. With that, though, I need to make sure that Mr. Morris heard that too. That's a, that's a, that's a stip that wasn't written out just yet. So, I'm going to call, one second, Mr. Morris, are you still on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Morris appears to need to enter his PIN code for us to unmute him. He must have dropped off and joined back in.
Okay, so we'll wait...
We will work to get him connected.
Yeah, but he is, he is hearing that comment right now, we can go back to it. If he, if he joins back on the call, if Mr. Morris, if you can hear me, you can, you can just alert me that, that you're back on, so please make sure that he's unmuted when he joins back that way, okay? Okay. Mr. Mayor, continue on.
That, that really completes my, my comments, Mr. Chairman. And I believe you will find that, that Morris agrees with the language because it is exactly the language that is included in an email from him to us from yesterday. So, with the addition of that, of that stipulation, so that all four of them are in there, the city does not oppose the application.
Okay, well, thank you for saying that, and, and as I will remind you over and over again, Mr. Mayor, I'm a resident of your city, so...
I am very, very much aware of that, Mr. Chair, and we appreciate the fact that you've chosen to live in the best city in Arizona, and quite frankly, the best city in the nation.
This is not a chamber of counsel, or a Chamber of Commerce speech. Okay, thank you for joining us today. I will now go on and I will alert my colleagues that I will be bringing, I believe, is that the last, Mr. Lazarus is the last? Okay, Mr. Lazarus, who also represents quite a large group of homeowners, so, Mr. Lazarus, welcome, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, and thank you for giving me a little extra time. I do represent the Palm Valley Phase 5 Community Association, subdivision directly across the street from subject property. Zoning ordinances and the zoning process protects citizens, neighbors, and property owners from developments that create incompatible uses to surrounding properties. Process protects the rights of the public. It protects the rights of citizens that reside in the area. To take away those rights, those protections, disenfranchise those citizens. Zoning ordinance has been, protect those rights and have been enacted since the 1930s in this country. The matter before you has been brought to you in such a way as to take away those protected rights. rights. We are not here before you on a zoning case. What you have before you is a compatibility permit. The way this entire matter has been handled is an attempt to circumvent the zoning process and the considerations thereunder. Staff and Mr. Peck have interpreted the state statutes and your county zoning code to determine that this case does not have to go through a zoning process, but a permit to determine compatibility for one property owner supersedes the rights of other property owners. You've been instructed that all the criteria you generally consider in a zoning matter are not relevant, no matter how you feel about the testimony that's being given by the opposition, your sympathy for their arguments, that's not what you've been instructed that you need to consider here. When considering just military overlay, they have said that you only consider the compatibility of this use to the military base. While it's important, it's not the only decision that you need to make. The way this has been manipulated, your determination cannot consider compatibility to the surrounding community, to the property owners and to the neighbors. They say you are not to consider this in hearing traffic, noise, health, and safety issues to the community, just to the military base. This is in direct contradiction to your state statutes as well as the county zoning ordinances. The military airport overlay does not, does not supersede or supplant the Mariposa County zoning ordinances and the underlying permitted uses, allowing uses not otherwise permitted in the underlying zoning. An overlay district, and this overlay district specifically modifies and further restricts certain provisions of the underlying zoning while leaving the remaining underlying provisions in effect, the R-43 zoning underneath. Title 28 of the military airport overlay protects the military base with additional more restrictive controls to protect that base. The use must still be permitted under the underlying zoning and these are additional restrictions that are added. I'm not going to go into our entire legal position and legal authority, you have that position paper in your file. I will only say that this process, if continued, which excludes the zoning process, sets a horrible precedent. In the future, if a member of the community lives near a property that is to be zoned within the military overlay, their issues don't matter, they're disenfranchised. That's why we believe that this case should be sent back to the Planning Commission for consideration as a zoning case along with a compatibility permit. That's why we've asked for a formal interpretation to the Board of Adjustment of the misinterpretation of your zoning ordinance by staff and your legal counsel. We are not asking for an interpretation of this process, we are asking for an appeal of their interpretation of the zoning ordinance that has caused an erroneous process. To negate the community opportunity to speak and part of, and as part of your decision making, we believe is unconscionable. So asking that this case either be sent back to the Planning Commission under a new zoning application, or at least that this case be continued and held in abeyance until such determination as our request for interpretation to the Board of Adjustment that is going to be heard on August 13th, 2020. Staff's position earlier, I was just, indicated that legal issues have no bearing on this decision. Of course it does. It goes to the very considerations that you are making here today and the essence and effect of your decision and what you are considering here today. And that's why we're asking for what we're asking for at this time. Thank you and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, yes, a question from Supervisor Gates.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Question for Jen, is this a sort of case of first impression here or have we had other examples like this where we've utilized this procedure with the military compatibility permit in that area, given the unique nature of Luke Air Force Base?
Supervisor Gates, members of the board, this process has been in place for 10 years and we've used it many times.
Thank you.
And, and I know this issue came up, I believe, to-
I'm sorry, I didn't get that answer. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, and I do know that, that Mr. Peck was on through the P and D, or P and Z, and was asked some of these questions and the county attorney's office guides us in, in these matters and we trust that we are looking at all phases of this and that's why we are here to this point. Yes, Mr. Lazarus?
No, I just was commenting, I didn't hear the answer to that question, I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't hear, okay, well, Jen, Jen will answer the question again, I'm sorry.
We've been using this process for approximately 10 years.
Okay. That answers, that, okay, I think that answers.
I heard the answer, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, there are no further, I'm looking at Fran, did anyone else register, did anyone else, is anyone else out there that I'd feel bad if I didn't see their digital hand waving at us right now?
Mr. Chairman, there are no additional speaker slips that have been submitted.
Did, did Mr. Morris rejoin the call?
Yes, he did, one moment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morris?
I apologize for the technical difficulties.
That's okay, this is, this is what happens during this pandemic time that we keep finding out. What, did you hear the, the stip read out by Ms. Pokorski to Mayor Shof?
I did, I did, Mr. Chair, thank you. I appreciate the staff and frankly, your assistance in arranging for these stipulations and to try and put us in a position where we are today, which I believe, based upon Mayor Shof's comments and the stipulations that have been added to this case, we are now in conformance with Goodyear and Litchfield Park and Luke Air Force Base in terms of the surrounding jurisdictions and meet their requirements for approval. So we are willing to accept that additional stipulation and will agree to the stipulations that were listed by staff previously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris, I appreciate it. So, this is getting close, I think, to the end, so I just wanted to thank, thank you, you, we can, we continued this case, we were about to hear this case last month and I appreciate you slowing it down to continue to work, to make this better for, for the citizens in that area. I don't, it wasn't an easy thing, I think, for you to do with the applicant, especially when you were talking to a, a business like FedEx that size. And I appreciate you slowing it down to give us a little bit more time to work with the mayors of those areas and your meeting with Luke Air Force Base and the general that's there, I had all of those types of meetings as well. Currently then, with the stipulations, we have, my colleagues should know, we have no opposition now from the main, you know, some of those main entities, the City of Goodyear, the City of, or the Litchfield Park, the town of Litchfield Park, Luke Air Force Base, and I believe that we've even had some talks with, I believe we've had some talks with the City of Glendale even as they are, as they are newly annexing. My question that came up to you is that cut-through issue on 151st, we have worked diligently on Saraval, what are your thoughts with that cut-through part? I'm assuming that's wholly within the City of Goodyear and I don't know what we could do to control that other than the City of Goodyear making that, I didn't quite understand if, because FedEx trucks might be in the area that, that some people might decide to cut through 151st. Is that, is FedEx restricted from using 151st?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to address that because I obviously also heard the concerns and complaints about utilization of that. I want to be crystal clear and assure both you and your residents that that is not the case. There is no reason for any of the traffic from this facility, any of the truck traffic from this facility, to utilize 152nd Avenue, which is the intersection, to go through that neighborhood and in fact, they would be prohibited from doing so by Goodyear's truck traffic standards. The traffic that's going to be entering and exiting this site is going to be from Camelback Road, it is not going to be from 152nd Avenue. I want to make that very clear.
I didn't talk to this person, but what, how about your, your closest neighbor to your east, the racetrack owner? I believe he put in a letter of opposition, but do you, did you talk to him at all?
Mr. Chair, we did. We had communication with the racetrack owner. That was also part of the alignment of our new exit, it was one of the suggestions and requirements from the City of Goodyear, that we have both 152nd Avenue and then we also have an access point along our western boundary, which is our boundary with the racetrack. Mr. Lazarus at one point had suggested that we try and get an easement through their property, that was not something that they were willing to consider, but we are working with the racetrack owner to realign the access point on Camelback so that we have an additional access point that would allow the traffic to go westbound without conflicting with any of the residential traffic at 152nd Avenue. It actually goes to the question that you were asking about 152nd Avenue, it's allowing us to access 152nd Avenue by having an additional point of access onto Camelback Road. I also want to clarify that the racetrack wasn't in opposition, they've actually been cooperative in efforts to move the drainage. I don't think they sent anything in support, I think they merely said they do not oppose the use.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this, I'm gonna bring this to a close. And I wanted to thank everybody who joined us today, it's been a lot of hard work and I know my colleagues in, in my office and they've been, they've been getting emails also, but I believe there's a 700-page book about people and what their thoughts are about this, this project. It is, it is an awfully tricky piece of land, this close up to Luke Air Force Base. It is, and will probably, other pieces of land as they, as they come onboard, will probably, other communities will find out the trickiness of this as well, especially when it comes to the protection of Luke Air Force Base, but also the protection of their private property rights. So, I don't want to go further, further into that. I will tell you, Mr. Morris, that, that as FedEx is getting close, I plan to reach out to FedEx, I know what logistics are, I know what GPS units are, I will probably put a letter into FedEx reminding them that just a simple message about traffic flow into those cabs of those trucks will get us to that, easily get us to that 90%, 10% because it'll be, it'll be guidance from their own company to access and, you know, on ingress and egress of that area. So, just, just letting you know that that's my right to go ahead and send a letter like that. I hope they do very well in this area and satisfy the needs of, of the customers that want to purchase services from FedEx. So, with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve this case with all the modified stipulations that were engendered today, both on paper and through phone call. I would look, look to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that these difficult issues can, can be more than challenging and you've worked this for a number of months as with our talented team at planning and zoning, so with all of that, I, I would be happy, because of your role as chairman, to, to make a motion to approve this zoning item and it has taken many twists and turns and so I, if I may, just make sure I get this appropriate, that first and foremost, we're talking about case MCP 2019-005 for the Falcon Project. Today's modifications and others that have been discussed would include stipulations A through P and that the revised language to conditions I and K and with the new conditions of additions I through O would be included in that. Is that correct? Did I keep track of that right, Jen?
Very good job. One small tweak, the new conditions would be L through P.
Oh, L through, through, L through P as well.
P was, P was the new one today.
So we have to include it in both, I understand. So, as Jen just stated, Mr. Chairman, I would include that in my motion to, to approve this item.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri, it is in my district, so it's a little bit tough. When I'm, when I'm chairman, I'm looking for, for the original motions elsewhere, but it is in my district, so thank you for, thank you for that. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, with a second with the comment.
Sure. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, would echo Mr. Chukri's comments, you, there, you know, you've put a lot of time into this, a lot of work has been put into these, you know, I've, I've had cases like these where you've got, you know, people come up, coming up to you in the grocery store or the restaurant and those are tough, but that's, that's part of what we signed up for here and I salute you for that. There was a suggestion by one person that there hadn't been public engagement or this was decided in a vacuum somehow, I really want to push back on that. Obviously, you've worked this hard, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was eight hours long. I served on the Phoenix City Council for seven years and I've been here almost four years, I can't think of many planning and zoning meetings for eight hours on one item, so that's the farthest from the truth in, in my estimation and I would just say, great work on this and the bottom line is that this particular case literally is adjacent to the runway. So from a land use perspective, this is a proper use.
Great, thank you, thank you Bill.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Sellers?
I just want to make a quick comment that, you know, when I was serving on the Chandler City Council, we had a similar case when FedEx was proposing building next to the Chandler Municipal Airport. A lot of concern from the residents, the facility has been in place now for a number of years and as you mentioned earlier, earlier in your comments, FedEx is very concerned about fitting into neighborhoods, they really are a very, a very good neighbor and there have been no complaints that I know of since they've opened that facility. And in fact, I'm told that is more intense facility than the one that we're talking about today.
Thank, thank you for that perspective, Jack, and, and telling me that because it, when things are on paper and swirling around in maps, you don't really get the full flavor until it's built out and, and we'll do our best to, to work with everybody as operations begin, so, thank you for that. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. So thank you for everybody for joining us on that. Okay, question to my, to my group, because I've watched Steve Chukri take two breaks.
Much water this morning, working out in a safe environment.
Yes, very, thank you Steve. Does anyone want to roll through the, or does anyone need to take a break? I've been watching my colleagues in their respective homes and you didn't, you didn't even jump up, so thank you for, thank you for doing that, guys. Okay, so now we are going to go to item number 15, statutory hearings clerk of the board, 15 is Public Service Franchise Crown Castle Fiber Transportation, 16 Patent Easement Abandonment Road File Number PAB-0121, 17 Patent Easement Abandonment Road File Number PAB-0108, 18 Road File Decorations, Road File Numbers, A is A689, B is A690. Road File Number PAB-0108. 18 Road File Decorations, Road File Numbers. A is A689, B is A690, C is A691, D 5924, E 5966, and F 5970. Fran, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 15 through 18?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Being that there's none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this item, and ironically saw Crown Castle on my way in, working on a street in my district.
Very good. Good. People hard at work.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We did already take care of item 19, 20 through 23, 24 through 26. We will now then move on to county officers, sheriff, 27 through 30. IGAs for unlawful medical marijuana trafficking with the cities of Surprise, Tempe, Phoenix, Buckeye. 31 is amend in agreement with the Arizona Department of Health Services. 32 is an IGA with the city of Scottsdale Sworn in Detention Academy. 33 Administrative Correction to Penale County IGA. Number 34 is a competition impractical with Netzian Technologies Group. The board will now consider items 27 through 34.
Move approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'll give it to Steve Gallardo.
Stand there, aye. You cannot stand there.
I have a motion and a second. Good job, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under judicial branch, Superior Court, number 35, appoint Superior Court Commissioner as Superior Court Judge Protem. The board will now consider item 35.
So moved.
Uh, okay, I'll take Jack as the first, and Steve as the second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county offices and departments, air quality, 36, agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority. Under Animal Care and Control Services, 37. Second Amendment to the IGA with the city of Litchfield Park. 38, First Amendment to IGA with the town of Paradise Valley. 39, Intergovernmental Agreement with the town of Queen Creek. 40, donations of pet food in April and May 2020. 41, restricted cash donations for June 2020. 42, unrestricted cash donations for June 2020. And 43, ASPCA COVID-19 Emergency Relief Grant Agreement. The board will now consider items 36 through 43 with all those long titles.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county offices and departments, constables, 44, grant funds from Constable Ethics Standards and Training Board. Under elections, 45, adopt amended emergency vote center resolution. Emergency management, 46, IGA with the city of Phoenix regarding their emergency operations plans. Under enterprise technology, number 47, approve Microsoft Enterprise Agreement expenditure. The board will now consider items 44 through 47.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Second.
And thank you, Steve. I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county offices and departments, finance, 48, resolution regarding reimbursement related to tax-exempt securities. Number 49, revision to finance countywide policy. Number 50, establish a new Unified Command Center department. Under human resources, 51, market ranges. The board will now consider items 48 through 51.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Okay, we got a motion from Bill and a second from Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Still under county offices and departments, under human services, 52, agreement with Arizona Department of Housing for Weatherization Assistance Program. 53, contract with Area Aging Agency on Aging Region One Incorporated for Senior Services. 54 through 55, grant funds from U.S. Department of Health and Human Services for early head start and head start programs. The board will now consider items 52 through 55.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Still under county offices and departments, human services can, is under 56 and 60, IGAs with the Gilbert Public School District, the Scottsdale Unified School District, Queen Creek Unified School District, Kyrene School District, and Higley Unified School District. The board will now consider items 56 through 60.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bill.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fran?
Mr. Chairman, just a small correction to item number 57. It indicates that this is in Supervisory District 1, and it should be noted it is in Supervisory District 2.
Ooh.
I caught that already, Madam Clerk, and I wasn't going to say anything.
I, I believe I received the email from your staff to make sure that it was corrected.
Very good. Do you have anything to say about that?
I don't. We just, you know, the sun shines brighter in D2. That's all I'm saying.
Not today, it didn't. So...
I think all the rest, all the rest of schools are in D1.
Yes, I noticed that, Jack. Would you like to make a motion?
Would. I move for approval.
Great. And we have a second from Steve. Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Still under county offices and departments, and still human services, 61 through 64, amend IGAs in agreements with the city of Tempe for temporary housing, Community Bridges Inc., City of Tolleson, Native American Connections. 65 is rescind an IGA with the city of Mesa. The board will now consider items 61 through 65.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh my, another. Way to go, Paige. Did you find something else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is another small correction to item number 64. It, it indicates Supervisory District 2, but it should indicate all districts.
Paige, did you paint that? Okay, so, looking for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, as defined by Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Supervisor Gates. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county offices and departments, still, planning and development, 66, Maricopa County Aggregate Mining Operations Zoning District Number 2, under procurement services, number 67, electronic, um, hmm, okay, oh, we'll get to that. 67, electronic document management system, software and support. 68, membership in the Sourcewell Public Purchasing Cooperative. Number 69, job order contractor for parks and recreation. And number 70, Isabel 429 and 407 G6 helicopter completion services. And I do, I do have a note. I'll just look to Supervisor Chukri for a moment.
Mr. Chairman, on item number 66, this is the Twin Knolls Development that has really been kind of fascinating after serving this office for eight years. Haven't quite seen something like it, but I, I believe this was going to endeavor to start a process that I think makes perfect sense to make sure that we're considering any and all impacts this would make to the community, and in particular, to my residents that are around there, my constituents that live in and around the Twin Knolls. However, just due to some wrinkles, I, I think it's probably best to continue this at the request of these neighbors, which I'm happy to do. So, I'm going to make a motion to continue this case to the August 19th, 2020 board meeting, please.
Okay, so that is item number 66, which is a motion to continue that item to the August 19th meeting. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And, do I hear any nays? I do not hear any nays, so that is approved. And I'll, now I'll just go back then to, I've already read off, 67 through 70. Do I have a motion for those items?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman, with a comment on item number 70.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Thank you, Supervisor Gates. Item number 70, Supervisor Chukri.
So, Mr. Chairman, where does this fall into our procurement process? And if we don't have the answer right now, I, I'm okay with it. But we had a helicopter that was in really poor shape that we replaced two to three years ago. There was a second request in the sheriff's budget this year. Is that this helicopter? Is this, I guess what I'm trying to get my arms around, Joy, is this the, a third helicopter that's new, or is this a second helicopter that's new?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is the helicopter from probably a year and a half ago. We've had some delays in procuring it, and then these are the completion services to get it ready to go, is my recollection, but we will verify and make sure you get that information.
Okay, but I think this would be the second new helicopter i- in the past five to six years.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
So, did the, the previous one, 407, was that the one we purchased four years ago, or is that the one that we were going to sell? Do you remember that? We were, the, the plans for this sheriff's department were, they were going to still get value from the one that was still in service, and this one had increased lifting capacity. Should that be a question at another time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if, perhaps Kevin Tyne is on the line. I think our directors were going to call in.
Mr. Prendeville was on the line.
Oh, thank Kevin, okay.
Mr. Chairman, and I'm, I'm okay supporting.
No, no, no. Mr. Prendeville is on the line.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But it is, it is nice to know what, which ones we're talking about, because...
Because there were some new, to your point, there, there were some new needs that I hadn't heard of before until it was presented about the, the lift.
Yeah.
Capacity or, or quality. So, I, I just want to make sure we're achieving the goals of all departments.
So, if Mr. Prendeville is, is on the line, could you, could you answer those questions, Mr. Prendeville? Thanks for joining us today.
Uh, yes. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Yes, this is the deal that we talked about about a year and a half ago. So, the 429 is the new helicopter with improved lift capability. The 407 is that old one held together by duct tape that we're trading in on this purchase. Right now, I believe, we're taking delivery of the base helicopter, the 429, and we'll be taking it over to another shop where they add all of our modifications to it. 407 will be traded in, but we'll lease it back just to be able to use it until the 429 is completed. And these, and we'll end up with just two helicopters, the one that we bought five years ago, and the 429 will be brand new.
Okay, so a quick question then, because I've been trying to remember to track that, and that's, that purchase was made a long time ago, and, but it still really hasn't gone into service, the 429, is what you're saying? What, what's been the delay?
There really hasn't been any delay. It, it actually takes a good year to build the helicopter. They build everything to spec, and this is actually on schedule for us to pick it up now.
Okay, so basically, we, we saw the showroom model, and we purchased that, okay, that, as, as it was going to be built. So, that, that's, that's understandable. Okay, great. Thank you for answering the questions. Okay, we're all good? All right, so, I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. Still under county offices and departments, Public Defense Services, 71, Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Drug Enforcement Account Byrne Funding. Public Health, IGA with Arizona Border Regents for COVID-19 Response Activities, 73, IGA with Tucson Unified School District, 74. Contract funding from Arizona Department of Health Services, 75. Contract with Hologic for rapid identification test kits. 76 is an agreement with Valleywise Health for WIC Services. The board will now consider items 71 through 76.
Move approval. Mr. Chair with a comment?
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Gates?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we've got a number of public health items here, including number 72, which relates to further beefing up the contact tracing effort of Maricopa County and the state of Arizona, and just wanted to take this opportunity to again, thank our public health team, which has done just incredible work ever since the end of January, when we had our first positive COVID-19 case. So, just want them all to know how much, I know all of us on the board appreciate their great work.
Great comments. Thank you, Bill. Okay, I got a, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Still under Public Health, 77, agreement with Deer Valley Unified School District, number 97. 78, amend IGA with Arizona Border Regents for Epidemiology Services. 79, amend IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services for Emergency Preparedness Program. 80 is rescind an amendment to IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services for Women, Infants, and Children Services. Number 81, grant award from Arizona Asthma Coalition for the school surveillance medication program. The board will now consider items 77 through 81.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. I have a second? Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under transportation, 82, bid and award for the Sun City West Unit 36 Rehab Roadway Rehabilitation Project. 83, road abandonment file number AB-326. 84, IGA with the city of Glendale to waive traffic control permit fees. 85, IGA with the city of Glendale for the exchange of roadways. 86, annexation by the city of Surprise, ordinance number 2020-10. 87, change order number 11 with Combs Construction Company, Inc. And number 88 is a change order number 12 with Combs Construction Company, Inc. The board will now consider items 82 through 88.
So moved.
Okay, okay, I will give that one to Steve Chukri, and Supervisor Sellers, the second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under setting of hearings, clerk of the board, 89, proposed Tonka Vista Irrigation Water Delivery District impact statement. Under planning and zoning, number 90, planning and zoning cases. The board will now consider items 89 and 90.
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Steve Chukri, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under the consent agenda, clerk of the board, cancellation of election and approval of appointment to the Board of Trustees for Berage Manor, IWDD, number 38. Number 2, special taxing district 2019 election canvas. 93, stale dated warrants. 94, duplicate warrants. Number 95, property reclassification appeals for approval. 96, secured and unsecured tax roll collections. Number 97, donations. Number 98, tax abatements. And number 9 is TASRS. The board will now consider items 91 through 99.
Move approval.
Thank you, Jack.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the addendum, Board of Supervisors, 100, CARES Act Expenditure Approval. County Attorney, number 101, quarterly RICO expenditures application. Number 102, TX2 2019 through 001720, Frings at Al versus Maricopa County, and TX2 019-001721, which is the Seville at Al versus Maricopa County. And under planning and development, item 103 is Maricopa County versus Coreshed at Al. The board will now consider items, oh, hold on one second. Okay, we will not take item 102 yet. We will vote on item 100, 101, and 103. The board will now consider items 100, 101, and 103.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval on those items.
Great. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good. Hearing none. Motion carries. And under item 102, Supervisor Gates is asked to recuse himself.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sorry for missing that. Supervisor Gates, we'll wait for you to leave the dais. Why don't you just take the long way?
Got it.
So, as to not read item 102 again, I, because I already have, but it's the Frings at Al versus Maricopa County, and the Seville at Al versus Maricopa County. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will invite Supervisor Gates back. Just getting your steps in, aren't you?
Yeah, I need to.
Great, thanks for rejoining. And the addendum, real estate, one oh four, approve real property purchase documents. Under transportation, one oh five, real estate, McDot consent agenda and items for the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty meeting. The board will now consider items one oh four and one oh five. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Item one oh six through one ten is IGAs with the town of Fountain Hills, the city of Litchfield Park, the city of Mesa. Item one eleven is Real Estate Flood Control District Consent Agenda and Items for the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty meeting. The board will now consider items one oh six through one eleven.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Thank you both. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. On item number one twelve is the public comment section. Fran, do you have any, anything to report regarding public comment, email responses, or anyone out there on the great internet?
Mr. Chairman, between the last meeting and this meeting, we have received some public comments in our public comment box. There are some people who have commented on the mask ordinance. There are some people who are still concerned that this is a bit of an overreach and they don't like it. There are others who have been thankful that the board went this route and created the masks. I call it an ordinance, it's a regulation, the mask regulation. In addition, we still received some latent comments regarding fireworks, even though it was passed the July fourth. And thankfully, we did not have any wildfires because of that. And finally, we had some comments regarding our animal care and control division. There are still some people who are concerned about the management issues there. And was there... They were mainly concerned about the management and the oversight that's happening at animal care and control. So we will make sure that the emails are printed and sent to your offices.
Please do. Thank you. Okay. Then we will now go on to item one thirteen, which is the supervisor summary of current events. So I will start with, let's start with Joy. Great. I'm about talked out myself. Steve Chukri.
I would concur with our distinguished county manager, only to add that I thank our two gentlemen who are a protection team for standing for three hours and pacing and walking and not shooting anyone, particularly us. So thanks to them, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, as always, thanks to both of you guys. It's, it's, we feel good about you being here, so thank you, thank you for protecting all of us. Okay, I'll go to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, first of all, just reminding everyone, we're in election season now and the election day is August fourth. But folks need to remember that they're not going to be voting at their regular precinct location. They're going to be going to voting centers. So if people want to know where to go vote, go to locations.maricopa.vote and you can go and vote at any one of the voting centers around Maricopa County. So I've got some questions about that recently and just want to make sure that everyone was aware of that. And thanks to our elections team and the Recorder's Office, who is, they're doing a lot of work right now and working to fulfill your goal of having three great elections as chair in 2020.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Thanks for bringing that up. It's important.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I can have one more moment. Sad to let everyone know that Laura Eder, who's been my chief of staff for many years, both at the city of Phoenix and here at Maricopa County, is going to be moving on. And Laura, thank you for all your service over the years. It's been great working with you with District Three in both places, so we kept that, you know, kept that very easy. And it was just a joy to work with you. And so just if I could, you know, in normal times, I'd have you come down here and everything, but I just wanted everyone to know, we just had, this was not prepared at taxpayer expense. Just want to make sure that everyone knows this, but just a little clock here. Laura was always good about keeping me on time for meetings, so just a clock and recognizing her efforts on behalf of the residents of District Three, both at Phoenix and over here at Maricopa County. And Laura, you will be missed and thanks for everything.
I would like to say, I think it was due to our recruiting efforts of District Four, after knowing you from a past life, that you were here. So thank you for being here. It was, it was great serving with you, Laura. So thanks, thanks for everything you did for, for Bill and for, and for all of us with all the discussions that you've taken part in. So thank you for that. All right, so I'll go to Steve Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quickly, I want to thank you for this marathon meeting, that's one. I just wanted to go over real quickly what, what Maricopa County has done in terms of the whole COVID pandemic. Our, our county has just been on top of many different issues that are related to COVID. But two, two things in particular. We are having testing out here in my district that Maricopa County has partnered up with Vidal Soul to, to conduct some of this testing. One is today, right down the street here from where I'm at, starting in a couple of hours, starting at two-thirty to seven PM at Desert Elementary School. It's right out here in Tolleson, like eighty-eighth or eighty-seventh avenue in Van Buren. That's one for today and then this weekend, or Friday and Saturday in South Phoenix at Greenfield Elementary School in, in the Roosevelt School District, both on Friday and Saturday, seven AM to six PM. Both Fridays and Saturdays, folks can come out, get tested. So Maricopa County has been doing a lot of work around Maricopa County in terms of getting folks tested. And even yesterday, I want a big, a big thank you to David in my office. We worked real hard yesterday delivering masks to every high school in Phoenix Union has masks that are, are part of our supply that we're giving out to the public. So if you have a family that cannot afford a mask, or in, in worse cases, they may, they may have a family of five or six but only have three masks and they're all sharing their mask, we definitely don't want that. We, we're allowing folks to go to any one of the high schools in, in Phoenix Union to go get a mask. And also on Cartwright Elementary School, that has been just a huge hotspot. I think it's both eight-five, zero-three-three and three-five are the, are the top two zip codes in Maricopa County with a high number of positive cases at all the elementary schools. Families that cannot afford to have a mask or don't have access to one, they can go down there and pick one up. That's compliments of Maricopa County as part of our, our supply and our efforts to combat this pandemic. So everyone that's been involved in Maricopa County over the last four months and just trying to get their hands around this terrible virus and suppress it as much as we can and, and get our families saved, just hats off and thank you so much. District Five appreciates it as well, I'm sure the other districts as well. But all the work out here in District Five, much appreciated. And that is it.
Thank you, Steve. Great points. Thank you very much. I will now turn to my vice chairman, Mr. Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make this quick as well. You know, we, I had an inquiry in my office from the Arizona Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing telling me that, that they really needed to get more clear masks because the people that they're dealing with use lip reading as much as signing for their understanding of what's being communicated. So I went to our, our staff folks here at the county and, and, you know, I can't say enough good things about our public health officials. They are really top-notch and I know they're really overworked, but I appreciate them so much. But anyway, we, we were able to obtain ten thousand clear masks, which I then participated in donating to this group. So very happy to be able to be involved with that. Something interesting, by attending meetings by web, I represented Maricopa County at the National Association of Counties Annual Business Meeting. I represented all of Maricopa County at that meeting. And because I was doing it on, on a web and had a couple of computers in my, in my space, I was also able to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting simultaneously. So interesting times.
Awesome. That's, that's hard work. We should pay you double for that, Jack. Good job. Make that happen, Joy. Yeah, I, just reflecting just on today, it's just the myriad of issues that come our way coupled with the pandemic still makes me want to point out just how well this county is doing in the way of, of working through this thing. And again, thanks to Joy and all the staffers, everybody keeping up on it because we truly do have a lot of business to the county. This is July. I, I heard that we get to take July off. I haven't seen that. So my colleagues, just an honor to serve with all of you. So I think that's going to be it. Or do you want to just see if we could go for a record and just hang out here and maybe do a cookout? So meanwhile, thanks to everybody for, for being here and we are adjourned.